Good evening. We're calling this board meeting to order. Can we rise and do any questions?
My congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call. We're all here. Please tell me. Recommendation approved the list of the number 10th regular school board meeting and the December 1st school board workshop.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have motion to approve both the November 10th and December 1st board meetings.
One second.
And the second. Do we have any discussion changes? Now, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Thank you. Recommendation to approve the bill list.
Motion to approve the bill list.
Okay, we move to approve the bill list. We have a second.
One second.
Second. Any discussion? Now, in favor, say aye. Or opposed, carried. Superintendent's report, Laura.
Hi, Donna. Are you ready?
Sure.
I'm having technical difficulties. Okay, should I do my COVID report part of my reporting on that?
Sure.
No, whatever, I think I'm good.
I'll just need some on.
Oh, we know you're good, Donna.
So, just for the board's background, typically each year we have some reports from the integrators which provides updates and goals for the year. And you heard earlier in the year, we were, trying to remember, September, the September meeting, you heard from Sue and the Adams, more about our academic and social emotional goals and updates, what we worked on last year, what we're working out this year. And now it's Donna Smithster to update on our technology and library services. Okay, so I'm just going to go through my. And this is going to be some of the work that we're doing, partly some of the goals that we're setting for next year. So, we always try to ground ourselves in the focus plan mission. And if you notice the words on the, as part of the mission, words that will see how their college students collaborate, contribute to the local and global community. And that's going to be reflected in the system standard, which are our, should I explain? Which are our standards that we follow, as well as the Wisconsin I T L standard. So you'll see the same language in each of those. So as we go through, we try to inform our decisions. We're going to be meeting with the Technology Advisory Committee. And so there's various groups that have given us feedback to help with our plan. But we also use the Speak Up survey. Our students took the survey on November 17th. We just received the results today, so we're going to go over some from last year, so from the 2020 school year. So there were three data insights from this last school year. So these are students reporting out on their digital citizenship information. And we do focus on this, the technology integrators who go over the classrooms and they work on this. So eighty-three percent of our students say that they know how to be safe online. Fifty-four percent say they know how to evaluate the accuracy of information. And seventy-three percent say they know how to detect bias. So because of our programming, I believe that we are about 10 percentage points ahead of the national average on these, and we've been slowly creeping up this year. So for the eighteen, nineteen school year, for example, that eighty-three percent went up to seven-five, and went to seventy-nine, so we're moving on up, which is good.
Donna, when is the survey taking, what part of the school year?
November.
Oh, November. And that is, that's self-reporting, right?
That's self-reporting.
Is there any way to know how accurately they, the kids know themselves?
Well, I think, you know, when, when the tech integrators go into the classroom and they're doing formative assessments on some of the work that they're doing, then they would see a back point. I believe the teachers try to carry that throughout their courses then. They go into the health classes, they go into the English classes, and they look at databases, and they do research, and that sort of thing. Health classes, we do their social media, information, being safe online, and that sort of thing. So, so short answer, hard number is no, but anecdotally, I would say practice. So this second data insight that they pulled would be benefits of using technology within learning. So interesting with this, students have a different value set for the benefits of technology within learning compared to adults. Most educators think about the value of technology as a tool for engagement. Students articulate the benefits of digital learning with an eye to the skills that they think are most important for them to develop. Consequently, students say that technology is advantageous for them in terms of providing ways to do these things, so communicate with teachers, develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, and collaborate with classmates. And again, in this case, we were way ahead of the national average. So nationals, nationwide students, forty-seven percent said that they communicate with teachers. Forty-two collaborate more, and forty develop critical thinking skills. Again, so. Best learning environments. So students use on the best learning environments to help them get prepared for college or work. So these are the top four that our students gave. They echoed what the nation gave for their top four. But what we can pull out for these is that we can think of ways to help the students of first, first, for first school learning, and ensure they're prepared for success. So as we are thinking about school and how school works, these are some of the things that they feel are going to help improve better. And I think too that our students are exposed to many of these things, for that, that most as well, with like knowing about internships and things like that. So another point of reference that we use is the Horizon Report. So the ed tech trends for 2021, we could probably predict all of these trends. So, and I believe that we are continually developing on these. The Tech Advisory Committee, we, we haven't met since 2019, so we'll go over some of that. We did develop, sorry.
I did have a question on like the beginning pages where you had the top insights.
Uh-huh.
Was there any comparison of what the grades from the younger grades to the older grades? Of what, where the biggest gap or opportunities?
No, that's a good point. We did pull it out that way. I could pull the raw data out that way and, and see what it would be. Yeah, that would be interesting, because we do most of our teaching and integrating in our lower grades almost.
Okay.
So how that curious to the upper grades.
Yeah, I'm just curious in the flexi freshman class, what is their relationship?
Right, right. No, that would be good. Our, our Tech Advisory Committee did, began to develop a digital learning plan. And so we used the future-ready framework, we completed surveys, we brought it, brought in a lot of groups. We're going to come back to that, but this year we're really going to focus on those two, the curriculum and instruction and assessment and personalized professional learning, because the main group of the Technology Advisory Committee is going to be teachers and students, and that's really what they're going to, they're going to be able to give feedback on the most. So our goals, huge goals that we had in 2019. We wanted to grow our digital culture. We wanted to increase our centralized course communication. So basically, we were talking about Canvas. We wanted to really beef up Canvas, we wanted everybody to be in there, we wanted a uniform space for kids to go for resources, and we wanted to provide our students' online learning experience. And we were really focused on, at that time, we were talking about virtual snow days, the whole state. You can do this flexible time, you can do a virtual snow day. And, and at that time, I think if we would have had a virtual snow day, we've never, we would have been okay, but we would have been great. I think now we'd be great. So that was one of our big, our big ideas, part of our plan. And then educating students to use their personal technology effectively, efficiently, and responsibly. I believe that we all raised the bar on that during COVID. So Tech Advisory Team steps, a variety of steps we're going to go through. We did just attend Slate these past three days. Great conference. The conference, I have a little book right here, stands for School Leaders: Advance in Technology in Education. So just a wonderful kind of team-focused conference that I believe that everybody who went took away a lot of information. And we are hoping to bring that back together, to share our learning, review those goals, and kind of go through that ideation process where we look at them, we see where we're at, we try to develop new from our new information, we bring it back, and then we revise. So we'll always be revising this, this plan as we go. Changing gears, you are in the library, welcome to the library. And our library also has goals. So our goals are to involve students in the library space. So we are using the, the technology students are working with us to bring a prototype of some shelving signs that they're going to create for us. As we genrefy the libraries, you'll notice that the fiction all has colorful stickers on it, that's to help students browse for different genres of fiction. And then we are looking to increase our use of library resources, obviously, and then, and then building a team. Our team is clearly new, we want to build our team so we can work together to provide all the resources that we have. And here's our book checkout, so this is last year and the beginning of this year. So beginning of this year, obviously, is the red. We have a little spike, which is awesome, and that is because our teachers are assigning choice books, which is wonderful. We'd love to see the kids in here checking out our resources. We also have electronic resources, we have free books and databases. These are our top 10 databases, a little green one up there that doesn't have any sign on it, so I was like, oh no, I don't have a little label. That one is all data, so that is our database for automotive. So if you want to look up a recall or something under auto, it's what many auto shops use, and our August department uses that one a lot. Laptops, our book checkouts are hover around 200, our laptop checkouts hover around 600 or 700 per month, as you can see. And then our Chromebooks are even higher. So that keeps my staff hopping in the morning, getting all of those devices out to kids who forgot, batteries ran out, you know, different things like that, so. And then we have technology integrators, again, shifting gears. They've had 148 informal interactions this year, so they're really working on those walk-ins to, to kind of coach our staff into how they use technology. Some of the examples of supports are up there, so not getting into the classrooms as much, and, but offering more support in other ways. And then some examples of what they have created. So they took all of our databases and they, they organized them according to research tasks and then shared that with the English department, so they were easier to use for the, for the students. They have tech tips which are on the right, and then they're working on helping out with a e-portfolio for the Global Certificate. Donna, could you explain to the board Jen and Liz, like how many hours do they work in their teacher role in this role? Just to know. Yeah, so they work half-time, so they each teach three classes, and then, and then they're in the library half-time. So Jen is housed right off of the library, and she's in there first through fifth hour, and then Liz is at north, and she's there sixth through tenth hour. And then they also do a lot of after-school professional development, a lot of just extra run, you know, there, there are extra people to be able to run around and fix things. So Nate has an office off here too, but if Nate's not there, then next stop is usually Jen, so she's operating the app for tech, tech support as well. And you'll see that on our next, the next slide, which is the different supports that they, they do. So classroom AV systems, which would normally be a Nate thing, they're going to run and do that because they're there, they can help. The top departments, they touch every department, but these are just the ones that use them the most, and it's our core areas. So again, the most supported tech tools, highest on the list is Canvas. They did an enormous amount last year and the following spring, when we had a lot of virtual options going on. And we are committed to that platform. So what I'm going to show you really quickly is some of the, some of the pages, so you can see a view of the exemplar pages. The first is going to be Jen's, so in Spanish, but you'll notice at the top, it says absence? Question mark, click here. So how easy is that for kids? So this is the front page that they see. And then, do you want practice? Click here. And then your tentative quiz dates. So, and then this is a slideshow, and you'll notice that many of them have this on their front page. So this is today's, and then if you scroll backwards, it's yesterday's, days before. And so you can see all of that. And then you can also go into the module area. And then she has hers organized according to different topics. So this is where you'll see like the guts, where everything is. So if you forget something, you were absent a while ago, then you can go back to that. Here's Joe Paul's AP Macroeconomics. So his, he has a week at a glance. So links are below, it describes what they're going to do. And then again, I'm going to go to, I'll go to the student view, so you can see all of that nav along the left, it looks confusing, right? What does that all mean? So if I go to the student view, he has all of it hidden. So all you can go to is home and modules, that's easier. And then here is Julie Schneider's Honors Chemistry, and very similar. Just got a slideshow here, more in-depth than the next pages, what you're doing each day. But the front one is going to be just a quick, a quick review, and then what to do if you're not able, able to attend in-class in person, and then she has her virtual, her Zoom links for virtual tests. So, and same thing, she's got everything hidden along the left-hand side, except her modules and her syllabus. So super easy for the kids to follow, for parents to follow, for support staff to follow. And Donna defined that manner in which they structure this is kind of uniform or similar to college, such that the kids moving out are going to be familiar to some degree. Right. Yeah, all colleges in UW, UW system use Canvas right now. So it's very, very helpful to them to be able to navigate this, and know how to upload those assignments. And no, you know, it's a little different. Sometimes they're used to Google where you don't have to save everything, and then they get to a different platform, and they're like, oh, that's right, I can't just leave the page, I have to save it. So, so that's, I mean, it's, this is awesome for them to be able to do, and do so well. It's really good to prepare. And then just some of our, our student experiences that we try to provide as a shortlist. Many more. And then some of our parent supports. At the Slate Conference, I found a much better way to do my parent support pages, so I'm excited to try something new on those. And then our data goals. Linda Kempin and Olson, Sue Gatto have worked really hard on the new student online enrollments. We're almost completed with it. All of our incoming eighth graders are enrolling into our school, so they're providing all of that information, and it's a brand-new process, and they've, they've done a great, a great job at it. And then our network. So we ordered 19 switches, 79 AP points, five more outdoor APs, and then two access controllers. Last summer, we really received early enough to put in the two access controllers. Then late summer, August, we received the 19 switches and the 79, just in time for school, you know? So we have all of them in except for, I think, five APs. So just a little bit left to do. Two more closets to do, so we're going to get those done this weekend. And then all but five of our internal APs, and then our five outdoor APs have not been delivered yet. So supply chain is hitting us hard right now, but, and then our firewall, we did replace last summer, it was nine years old. So imagine having a nine-year-old piece of technology serving as your firewall for your school. So we are very happy to get a new one in. And then we provide testing support, so that could involve doing a virtual server, setting up computers, and just generals, generally supporting the technology for those. And then part of our research and planning for the IT department, network access control we're looking at, that's going to help manage our Wi-Fi, help us better know who's on our network, and to offer security. So if somebody comes on our network, we say, you can't come on our network unless you've got these four things on your computer. So that sort of thing to make it a little bit safer for us. A single sign-on is always a big thing, streamlining support, obviously, we always want to get better at our support. And then the biggest one is keeping up to date with constantly changing systems. So that's all I got. Do you have any additional questions? Concerns?
So this is the video class?
What? Yes, yeah, yeah. I think, I want to really praise Donna for her leadership. This is a tricky field, and she has a very small, bare-bones technology team to work with in terms of instructional technology and the physical infrastructure, network, devices, and they're running all the time, constantly. So I really appreciate Donna and her work and her team's work. Yeah, and I have the best stock. As long as the cartoon people don't, here in the library, as long as they don't keep getting jobs that offer benefits and leave. Right. And just keep replacing and replacing. Yeah, that is a challenge, but, but I do, I have really great people. As you can tell, just by looking around the library, my staff, and your brand-new staff, and your students.
Donna, when the new staff knowledge comes out, or new students come in, I want to make them really assembly. Pretty big task, take a lot of support from your group, or is it pretty, is it pretty
I think they're pretty self-sufficient. We generally, our part is to hand out all the usernames and passwords, and obviously the big questions they come in, but they, if they start mid-year, they, they hit the ground running, you know, they're in the classroom already. And, and as you can see by the Canvas forces, it's, it's pretty self-explanatory, and I think each teacher takes their time to go through and spend their setup on it. It's, it's a lot for them to take in.
For different teachers, I mean, that configured differently, different teachers are pretty much following the same framework, or?
For the Canvas pages?
Yeah.
Um, we, we hope that they have it that way, some do, some don't. Teachers teach differently, and sometimes it doesn't work for their class exactly the same way. So you'll notice that some people might have unit buttons on their front page, and the, and the kids adapt pretty well. I, I think as long as they have that backend module area and that their front page is, is organized so that kids can get to what they need to get to quickly, I think, I think everyone, everyone does, does okay. The technology integrators are helping with taking a look at some of those pages and offering feedback if it is confusing, or if there is something that they can find.
Wait till the, each of the backend members responsible for saying up their own front pages, like that.
Yeah, there are templates available that you can purchase, but I think our students do a good job, and they help each other.
Is everyone on board? I mean, is everybody using the system for it there?
After, after COVID, everybody's using the system. Before, I couldn't have probably been able to say that. I don't know, what's, what does parent access to the content on, say, the teacher's page for their class? Do the parents have access to that type of information? Yep, on the parent technology help page, there's a video that'll walk them through what they can see and what they can't see. I have a little PDF too, what they can and can't see, and then how to sign up. So they, they just go to the login page and need an account, sign up, and then they need a pairing code for their child, so that they can either get from me, their teacher, or guidance counselor, and then, and then they can see a lot of the materials in the class. They can't see other students', you know, information. And I keep up with their kids, go, oh, you're supposed to be right now, see you in a sec.
Another question for us. Anything, you guys?
I just think when you think of technology, I think Donna and Kevin Lipscomb are the, you know, two that are in charge of making sure that the school runs, and I think the part about, you know, what her staff do with like making sure that we have Chromebooks, making sure that technology's working, maybe don't think about it when you think about library technology, but is responsible for the daily operations of the school in today's day and age, so it's huge piece.
However, science is really vibrant. Thank you, Donna. Thanks. Thank you.
And then the second part of my superintendent report is just the monthly COVID and illness updates. So for Arrowhead information, currently we have less than five staff members and less than five students with active COVID. But remember, most students and families are choosing not to be tested, so then we started watching illness levels. The average illnesses for last week, we check every Friday for the week, average illness or absence was 76 students per day, which is 3.7% of our population. And then just a reminder, the average prior to COVID was about 20 kids out per day for illness. Waukesha County had information to share. They shared, these are their words, "First and foremost, they encourage everyone over the age of five to get vaccinated to help stop the spread of COVID and protect themselves and others. While some rate through cases of COVID do exist, vaccinated people have a significantly lower chance of hospitalization or dying from COVID if they do catch it." Waukesha County also shared their number of COVID cases remain very high. Right now, there are about 260 new cases confirmed through testing per day. November had a 58% increase of cases over the month of October. But even with those high numbers, the rate of hospitalizations and deaths remained proportionally steady. So that's good news, and they attribute that likely
So that's good news and they attribute that likely due to so many adults being vaccinated in our county. When it comes to children, during the month of November, thirty four point four percent of all confirmed COVID cases were children eighteen years and younger. There were one thousand fifty six cases of COVID under the age of ten. So eighteen percent of all cases were kids under the age of ten. This was a marked increase from October and more than double of any other month. But as Children's Hospital confirmed, severe illness from COVID in kids remains very rare. Per the weekly chart of childhood cases by school district boundaries, and the board has seen this before. So just a reminder, the district boundaries chart does not just mean Arrowhead or Arrowhead K eight feeders, public schools. It includes all the Prokial schools, it includes homeschools. So any kids living in our district region or Waukesha district region or Hamilton district region, they share out numbers to us. So per that chart, the Arrowhead region was tied last week with Waukesha region for the highest number of childhood cases. They had one hundred and nine tested and confirmed in both Waukesha and Arrowhead. Nellbrook was a little lower at one oh six and then all the rest of the regions were quite a bit lower from eleven to eighty-eight. And then finally, the, I guess, the main topic that the health director shared was about the Omicron variant. He said Delta is still the dominant variant, variant of COVID in our county or in our country. But Omicron has been detected all over the world, including Wisconsin. There are two main concerns with Omicron at this point. One, it's highly transmissible, more so than Delta, which was more contagious than the initial COVID nineteen disease. Where present, Omicron has quickly become the dominant version of the disease. And the second area of concern for Omicron is that the number of mutations of the Omicron variant is far, far more mutations than the other COVID variants. He said there's thirty mutations so far. I don't know, I'm not a medical expert, so I don't know what thirty means compared to what I don't. But he said, the more changes or the more mutations means the less likely the body will recognize it to combat it. But so far in other countries where Omicron has become dominant, it does not seem to cause more severe illness. Information about this variant is still very new and fresh. The health, the health director feels there will be more known during the next couple of weeks as research is completed, particularly by the pharmaceutical companies about the effectiveness of vaccinations against Omicron.
In case of talent from the public. Things appear to be calming down. And it looks like, Bob, it looks like you're the only one that's asked to speak to us this evening. Must be coming less interesting. Well, first of all, I don't know if anyone was at North yesterday to see the Christmas concert. It was phenomenal. The kids did a great job. Hats off to Mrs. Billski, Mr. Chopiano, the kids, it was, it was the North Choir and the Broadway Company. You got some here, right? They did, they did great solos. There was an awesome duet and a great version of God Bless America and Mr. President, it's on, it's on YouTube. You gotta watch it. It was, it was phenomenal. It all looks like self-response to do a reading because I was walking up the hall. This is just an observation. As, as you may or may not know, I sit on, on two boards, two public boards, not related to Arrowhead. And one of the observations I, I'd made, and I don't know if it's a big deal, if it's a requirement or not, but at our board meetings, it's laid out similar to this, and we do our minutes. We don't just approve our minutes, our clerk reads our minutes. And many times there are corrections made from the minutes, whether it's word smithing or just the way something is laid out. Our president doesn't assume that everyone reads them because sometimes they don't get there on time. And I don't know if that's something, I know your minutes are a lot longer than ours. But I'm, I'm not sure if that's something you want to consider doing. Because there are, there are times that I don't get to see the minutes until I get to the board meeting. And then I'm reading along with the clerk. And meant, like I said many times, members of the board do make, make corrections. So that's just, that's just a side. Number three, I noticed on the agenda. Let's see. Should have, should have. Maybe you can help me out. Is there a action item on tonight regarding COVID nineteen mitigation?
Yes, within the policy area?
Yes, right, okay. So I don't, it's not important that I see it, but you aren't worried, right? So a couple of things I noted on that, I was, what brought my attention to that was the word action. I was at the last policy meeting. And regarding COVID mitigation. And the super, I'm going to do some quotes here for the superintendent. At certain illness levels, it may be out of our hands. And superintendent also said ten percent of non-statutory requirements. So and, and the superintendent also said that she has statutory requirement responsibility to shut down the school. And just out of curiosity, and you don't have to answer this now, I'm curious what that statute is so I can read it. So I couldn't, I'm sure it's out there, but I couldn't find it.
Right, it, it not, let me just interject, there's not a statutory requirement for me to shut down the school. By statutes, there's a couple of bodies who are able to shut down a school. That's the state health department and a superintendent. So you have the jurisdiction to shut down a school. So for instance, snow days. We're not having the board meet at three thirty in the morning to talk about shutting down the school, that's my job.
Right, and does that statute point out like health conditions in the school? Shutting down the school for COVID or?
It's just more general, so if there's an emergency, I can shut down the school. You know, electricity goes out, we cannot go to school. I have the jurisdiction to shut down school. So they, I think the law is probably pretty vague on purpose.
Okay.
For any, any emergency situations that might arise. If there's not enough teachers, we may have to shut down the school.
At that policy meeting, the board, the committee that was, that was in attendance, I reviewed the video quickly tonight. And it seemed to me that everyone in attendance was in agreement that they were going to leave everything status quo. As a matter of fact, board member Behringer said, I really like your idea of calling it emergency. So it seemed to me that the board decided that we're going to leave it status quo for where the policy was when it was made in spring of twenty twenty, is that right? The COVID mitigation plan was spring of twenty twenty. So the policy meeting indicated to me that nothing was going to be changed.
I'm thinking, I realize maybe it's just that, maybe.
Right.
Committee doesn't make that statement.
I understand.
Come out of committee, come to board for, for action.
Right, I, I understand that.
And to me. More change or whatever.
Right, I understand that, I understand that completely. And it seemed to me that the committee was going to come to the board tonight and recommend no changes. But I see on the agenda that there is an action. And I'm wondering what that action is.
Even if we were to leave the wall, that would be an action.
Okay, all right.
Taking action, don't leave the wall.
Okay.
Or to change it.
I was just curious if something changed from the policy meeting that you guys had or if there's other discussion you're going to have to like that. That was a, that was one of the questions. That's it.
When we came out of policy, the board had asked me to update the plan to include what I have put in the plan. So it was more just documenting, more of the trying to document things that we already do that weren't already in the plan. Also about informing staff and families. If we were getting close to a ten percent point, to notify families to essentially say, we're getting to a point where we're going to be contacting the health department. We might want to consider additional strategies voluntarily to help reduce the spread. So that's why I remember finding out the policy.
So the link to the Arrowhead twenty twenty one school year COVID nineteen, other illnesses, health strategies, that was on the agenda tonight? Your, this is word for word for the same one that was created in twenty twenty?
It is not.
That changed?
Yes.
When did that change?
After the policy meeting, that same day I changed it.
I didn't see anything in the policy to change anything.
I can provide you with the last. I can provide you with the stripped down version that was approved in May or June versus this.
And you're saying any changes that are in here were discussed at the policy meeting?
Yes. Or I had said to the board, I'll look through other schools' policies and find ideas for things we're already doing. So for instance, in number two, I added additional health risk mitigation strategies include, and then I put in like hand washing, hand sanitizing, and respiratory etiquette will continue to be reinforced within the buildings. Appropriate enhanced cleaning and disinfection measures will continue to be implemented. HVAC system control upgrades allow for improved control of airflow and air quality in both campus buildings. So, you know, some of those things that are already existing in our building, that wasn't in our, the plan as of, that was adopted by the board in the shooting.
But you're saying it wasn't necessarily discussed in the policy?
It's just that I would find things to record initially.
Does it not have to be discussed in policy? Before it comes here for us?
We can take action at the board without going to policy?
Well, it's been the policy just to. So probably.
I think Bob, if it's in front of us. It would be somewhat actionable, right?
Right.
That's why discussion, action.
I'm just trying to understand if there's something changed here that wasn't discussed in that policy.
The only thing that wasn't was when they charged me to essentially we fit up, find note things that we're already doing.
Nothing to make, in other words, sneak him something that'd say, okay, after today, we're up. Enforced mask right there, that nature.
Okay.
Nothing to make.
Learning curve. Trying to understand. Thank you. Anybody else would like to have anything to say that didn't sign up? No? Go ahead and move on. All right, curriculum.
Um, there are a few items in front of you for the, for the board to consider and approve. At the December second meeting, we reviewed the course guide and summer school guide for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year. And that's before we put discussion and action tonight. And previous to that, we have two, from the November, October meeting, we have two course proposals that are up for discussion and action, music foundations and music production and leadership too, that were discussed at the curriculum committee meeting. And then as part of my director's report, I reviewed with the curriculum committee meeting, some work in progress on academic and career planning, a crosswalk of the career sixteen career clusters. And the, they're given pathways and how that crosswalk impacts our Arrowhead programs of study. So students can see direct pathways for their career interests. It's just a different approach to our curriculum guide. That's a work in progress. I was simply updating the, the committee on that work in progress, potentially for that to become something the board would adopt down the road.
It's such a positive piece of information.
It's a work in progress.
The discussion itself is very positive just because of all the choices and different ways and the activities recently weren't available to students.
Right, some of it's very intuitive to the ways our curriculum guide is structured by department. So it kind of makes sense, if you're interested in the arts, that you're going to look in the art department. But some of it is not always intuitive in terms of some of the opportunities that students have to study something that's connected to a wide range of careers. So it's just a different approach to help guide our students while they're here for four years, as they make their post-secondary plans.
I think we all come away from looking at that guide year to year, and especially this year. It's a tremendous choice that our kids have that can, can go in so many directions.
There's a lot of opportunities.
And outside of this building, so where they can go to, to get more.
Right, we also reviewed. I'm just kind of updated the board on some of our dual credit opportunities with WCTC and other regional universities for students where the readiness is there to earn those credits. We reviewed the amount of students taking advantage of that and those changes that are coming forward from WCTC in terms of reducing barriers for more opportunities for students to take dual, dual credit.
When given the opportunity, our kids can go so far beyond. There's so much here already, but just we use so many resources out of the cloud that are just wide open to our students.
We keep wanting to, keep wanting to remove the barriers to grow those opportunities, that's the goal.
So one question I forgot to ask, does our team of teachers have any idea what the enrollment is going to be on music production?
They're hoping for a full section. From the interest surveys that were sent last spring, from the feeder schools and current Arrowhead students, there was a wide range of interest. We know from doing these kind of activities in the past, when we do course proposals, that just because somebody indicates on a survey that they might have interest, our students are tied into already a lot of curricular opportunities, but we're hoping for full section.
That's coming for the teachers who have a good handle on it. For the students who are looking.
Right, there'll be a highlight, where counselors go into our classrooms to talk about the course selection process. They go in our English classrooms usually. At the end of January, beginning of February, they'll highlight what's new opportunities for students. And then they, of course, they walk through credit, graduation requirements, things like that. But they'll make sure that students know of that opportunity and from a wide range, that of course, within departments, that's also discussed. Any new coursework is always kind of shared with students, they know that the opportunity is there.
Everything we heard that morning was so over the top, it's so positive, it's so beyond. You know, even where we were just a few years ago and so, it's, it's course beyond leadership and development. It was such a tremendous treat and joy and opportunity to sit in that meeting. Because I, I feel we were all in awe of what goes on here and out for our students.
A lot of, a lot of good learning opportunities.
Yeah, yeah, they can go and try different things, you know, and not be bound in and can't, can't get anywhere. Our teachers are just outstanding with what they've come up with and what they propose.
Driven by staff.
Truly thankful for each and every one of them.
They're so enthusiastic.
Great, great structure.
Like walking five feet over, above the air, you know, the ground. Because you just think, how do, where do they find the time? And all that they're doing with all their, the different things you come up with even more. And, and so I think our students are the benefactors. It's really a treat to be a part of it.
I have a question for the curriculum. Here, just a couple of things. Do you need for the leadership to, I know there was like some possible discussion. I was trying to look at the guide, is that going to be created in class or a pass fail class?
It's going to continue to be a pass fail class.
And then the second item was in terms of summer school. I know those are the courses that are being offered, but maybe not necessarily that there might be implemented because maybe there's a lower enrollment and whatnot. And for summer school, for a student, it's an opportunity so that they get a failed class, something to make up. Or maybe it's like they can devote more time during the summer at this class, focus on that class, rather than juggling six, seven, eight different classes.
There are some classes that are taken for credit opportunity, so they're taking it for the first time. And some classes that are taken as, as a redo or remediation or repeat. Those are indicated in the guide, all of them are dependent on having enough enrollment to run.
And what I would like to suggest, so if there is classes like Hey, Renekton included this summer due to low enrollment, I would like to see if we can make, if it's like communications with other schools in the district. So if it's like, you know, say if it's like Ocon or Kettle Marine offering that class here at Arrowhead. You know, if it is opportune to keep up with them.
Students from outside the district always have the opportunity to take one of our classes in summer school as an open enrolled student.
Right, but I was just in terms of like communication.
Sure.
Because I know a class year student, you know, couldn't take it here at Arrowhead, but they went to Ocon.
Sure.
To fulfill that.
Sure.
You know, if Ocon's having a problem there, we're having a problem.
Yeah.
Can we work together?
We can certainly try.
Has Mr. Woody talked about potentially having one of his leadership classes in the summer?
Um, he hasn't, it's not beyond possibility. He's also the varsity girls' basketball coach, he runs a lot of camps this summer. So it would maybe have to be, and the other teacher was, who's the varsity basketball coach, he runs a lot of camps in the summer. So if there were other instruction, instructors who would maybe be willing, we could consider that. Leader's mindset probably more appropriate in the summer as it's more introspective. Leadership too is more about making that change, that difference within the school, within the school, within the community, and probably maybe more effective when the school's in session swing. But those are, I think, we try to gain momentum with our coursework within the school year first and kind of see where that momentum grows and where the interest grows, and those are always possibilities.
You know, we, I just want to.
I heard that.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to approve the 2023, 2022, 2023 course guidance, summer school guide. So move.
Second.
David Wood, second to approve the 2022, come on, 2022, 2023 course guidance, summer school guide, any further discussion? Now, a little favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Both. Carry. A discussion on the, our, we have a motion for new proposal for music foundations and music production class. As soon as, David Wood, second to approve the, oh, new combination, new production class. Favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Both. Carry. Motion to approve the new course for leadership two. Okay, move, second to approve the leadership two class, any further discussion? Now, a little favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Both. Carry. Thank you. And next meeting soon, summer second, no, that was last day. Guys, you'll get a lead.
Be determined, I think.
Be determined. Why not, what's the question? Uh, nothing to report, that's due, to be determined.
The budget process gets.
I can share just a little bit. Yep, you might have heard of this, governor needs to give us some funding to the coronavirus funding funds. So that equated to $264,000 for Arrowhead, so that's 134 hours per member in term of three-year average revenue limit. So it's 1,975, and that virtue is that here that the back ends at 134, it's at the 264,000. So if you remember back when we built the budget, the biennial budget from the state added $0 to the revenue limit, $0 to the per pupil rate, which are the only two ways that our budget can increase. So this $134 is somehow to, to get to one year of it. So this is only for this year, next year's another story. So the other thing that's been in the news lately is the S R three grant. So we know, we go back up, S R one were provided an allocation, the first year of, so it was 2021 last year. It's $40,000 and we knew that. So that was based on the title one formula calculation, based on your economic status and your students' percent of forward economic status. And a minimum, so every school district got at least $40,000, so that's where we got that, that funding. And this is what our legislators are telling us to balance our budgets with, and that's their justification for revenue limit for people. So $40,000 on S R one. S R two, our first allocation was about $105,000, which we used last year also to cover some of the sub-costs related to COVID. And then during the year this year, we just found out what our allocation was. This is after we approved the budget, we finally got our numbers, but it was based on the instructional minutes calculation. So that generated another $400,000 in S R funding that we can use to help bring students up, you know, for the learning loss that they had. Well, instruction was different than it had been in the past. So that's a total of about $500,000, so $540,000 between those two buckets. S R three, our title one allocation is about $235,000. That's the piece that the, the EPI just announced that they released 95% of the plan. And 95% of the plan means $235,000 to Arrowhead. Again, that's based on that calculation that generated $40,000 for us on title one, or I'm sorry, on S R one. Or $105,000 on S R two. So for S R three, we got $235,000. And there's only 5% hanging out there, which seems like nothing, right? But that's a major component for us, potentially. The piece that's hung up is what the joint finance committee changed. EPI had a proposal out there providing a minimum of $781 per student with the S R three money. And the joint finance committee changed that slightly and said, well, you're only eligible if you were in person for 50% of the time last year, which we were, so we'd be eligible. But that's the piece that's getting hung up at federal level. They're not liking that, that language. And so I'm not sure what's going to happen with that other piece, but if we could have gotten, or if we do, yeah. If we've got 781 per pupil, that S R three would have been an additional $1.3 million. So that's what's hung up right now. We don't know whether we're going to get it or not get it, but that's really important money. We think we're going to try to get through this budget that the state provided zero on, or next year's budget that the state provided zero on. So just wanted to make sure you had some idea of what you're hearing in the news and how it relates to us. It's, it's some big dollars that are hung up, even though it sounds like 95% of it was. It doesn't mean, that 95% doesn't mean much to schools like Arrowhead with low economic status, low free readings numbers.
I guess the governor eaves its dollars when they're in comp.
Third, we get, we get them tomorrow.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Wow.
It was a quick turnaround on that. So that was interesting to hear, we had heard about it, heard about it, and heard about it, but nothing was in writing. So unless I see it in writing, I'm not putting that into our plan. And it came out and they, when it did come out finally, and we were hearing $130, so it came out $134. We have the funds within a week of when it was announced. So that's, that's nice that they were ready to roll it out.
Are there any jobs that, how it can be used, there's a total?
That, that one, that $235,000 is totally open. $264,000, that's totally open. And that's, I believe the intent of that is, okay, the legislature can be zero. At least you'll have $130 per student to, to help you a little bit for this year.
The other grants, do you have, who's to jump through?
Yeah.
Certain criteria for the spend.
Yeah, well, we see, um, sort of, but.
Oh, for the. We can, or we, we're not required to, so right now we just have, will exceed what our prediction was from the state sources of revenue, like $265,000. So we can do an amendment toward the end of the year to get that in. But again, I look at a budget as a plan, you know, and it's, plans change throughout the year, so you don't always get your budget right on. This is a perfect case where we were hearing things, nothing was written. I don't know who would plan that money into their budget, I don't think anyone would have. And now it came out, so it's helpful, it's, it's, it's well needed now to help us get this year. Remember, we're going into this year with a deficit budget plan. But this $265,000 will help offset that.
So do they have a target date for, uh, resolve it?
That's left.
Yeah, I read, it was like a. Yeah, it was like a three-page letter that I, I read that explained, it was the letter from the Federal Department of Education to Wisconsin's Department of Public Instruction and outlined, you get all your money except this 5%, I think it was $77 million. And explained the rationale behind saying, if you were in person, in-person instruction for 50% or more, legislators developed that to try to reward those that, and incentivize others to get kids back in person. That didn't match with what the feds wanted and said it's further penalizes those learners who need resources the most. So impoverished students, high urban populations. The argument that some of us have already been expressing is COVID instruction and COVID, all of that impacted all students. Some money already, significant money already went toward in grant, in the first grant, the second grant, toward free and reduced lunch populations. So where we had $40,000 for one grant, MPS had millions of dollars. Now, granted, they're, they're so much bigger, but proportionally huge difference, which was absolutely needed. It's families that don't have Wi-Fi and their kids need to learn, give them a Wi-Fi. That's understandable, but at some point, when MPS and other districts have close to a billion dollars, three quarters of a billion dollars for MPS. And there's other districts that have students that also have learning loss that need help, a fraction of the amount. So I, I don't know. There's no timing, but the letter said was they will, they'll work with EPI. EPI is willing to work with them to figure out what will qualify. Most of us districts that are getting far less money per pupil than other areas are trying to advocate for our students. It impacted all of us. The first couple of grants probably evened out poverty issues compared to other student issues. So I, I don't, it just doesn't seem fair to take away and give to districts that already have a lot of people.
And it's frustrating to hear that we should balance our budget on money that we don't. Some districts have, some districts can't get through it, but it'll be challenging here, you know, especially with CCI, the way it is. And, uh, like, you know, looking at, so.
In regards to, oh, excuse me, in regards to learning loss, will there ever be a point where we're caught up again, where the kids are?
Well, we sure hope so, and we're trying hard in terms of, especially with freshmen, but all grade levels. The, the kids are, they're just not as prepared, they're not as prepared academically. You'll hear in our report later on, they're not as prepared behaviorally. So we are working hard at putting tutoring supports in, things like that, where it's, the goal is shot in an arm, shot in the arm. Boost them up to get them back to the same level. Every single classroom teacher is having to look at their curriculum pacing and what did kids miss last year and the year before? How do we catch them up but not be behind for a whole school career?
And in that same vein, are we recommending summer school? You know, the teachers sit down with parents and children and say, you need to take summer school. And in that case, does that increase the numbers a lot?
Could, yeah, could this year. I was surprised last year by some of the numbers being as low as they were, but we'll, we'll recommend summer school. There'll be course recommendation shifts in some cases. We have invested in some more tutoring. In coursework like math, it's most, at the high school level, it's probably where we see it the most compared to what an elementary school may see or educator may see, but we're trying to invest in assessment. We've adjusted a lot of our curriculum to, for review. For example, for our students who were eighth graders during the pandemic, when it initially hit and schools closed and they were learning online, if they were like, like an algebra student, which is so foundational in math, we talk about that a lot. They take geometry, right? Our, our US model for math is to take a year off of algebra, to take geometry. Well, now they're seeing advanced algebra for the first, for the first time. And they, those formative developmental really kind of foundation building skills maybe weren't as solid as we're nor, as we're used to seeing. I, I take issue with the term learning loss. I, I took issue with it when I first read it, because it's like loss of, everybody's in this, everybody globally, okay, is in the same boat. Can we, can we kind of put that into perspective a little bit? I think it was a little bit of learning disrupted. And I, I, I think, you know, from a formative standpoint, I think we're doing some of the right things to try to bridge some of those gaps. Tutoring support recommendations for summer school adjustments to the curriculum. And I think as long as there's less disruption, I think you're right, in a couple of years, three or four years, we could probably be back on pace. I, you know, I think there was a lot of hope from our instructional staff this year that we'd have, you know, in terms of, it was hard to know how much instruction would have to be revised, or how much curriculum would have to be revised. A lot of pre-assessment to determine kind of where, where are you, where should you have been? And adjustments have been, have been made that way. But remember, like, just like a middle school's preparing kids for high school, high school's preparing kids for college and, and career expectations and military expectations. So, so we still have that obligation, you only get four years to try to close that gap in the high school. So it's, I think it's going to be an ongoing effort, but I think, I think we'll see this for a couple of years. Hopefully less disruption, that'll help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for adding that to the agenda. Very helpful. Three courses, uh, or before.
All right, building grounds, we didn't have a meeting this month, uh, next was January 5th, 7:00 AM. Personnel.
Personnel has a meeting coming up next Wednesday morning. All bodies at, you know, to, of a athletic code violation that will have to be heard, we start at 6:45. And we'll, in the closed session immediately to address that, it is a documentary review. So bring your reading glasses. What's going on with one of our terrific students, those things are terrific.
It says 7:00 in here, you said 6:45, so what is?
6:45.
6:45, right.
This agenda was posted before we planned for that.
Oh, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure I.
And administrative contracts are, for renewal, committee's going to do a review of those. I had asked for copies of all of them, because this is my first, as personnel chair, the interest of fair disclosure, you all received all dozens of contracts, nobody's. the interest of fair disclosure, you all received all dozens of contracts, nobody's asking you to read the contracts. If I see anything interesting, I'll sure let you know. But, uh, we've got our one direct report and the rest of the administrative staff. Again, you know, hands on deck.
Can't be closed?
It will be a closed session.
It will be closed.
Uh, both the contract review and the, uh, student elements are gonna be closed, we've had a couple of tentative agenda items.
There's, there's two other agenda items that we put on the agenda, not knowing if they'll be timed or not, so they may need to be pushed to another meeting. The summary of the staff survey results, and then that kind of leads into a conversation about, um, current and future workforce trends. The attract and retain, that's becoming more difficult in the area of education and even just the population of employees and, I guess, generational differences in, I don't want to say work ethic, everyone works really hard, but just differences in employees that you see now versus twenty years ago. And some of that seems to be reflected in our staff, staff survey as well.
I'm kind of thinking, neither of those sound like they're really timed since.
They're not super pressured times.
Maybe we could just put those on the next month's agenda.
Sure.
And so I think it sounds about like it'll all be closed session.
Okay.
Stuff that's available for open session.
All right, thank you. So you can sleep late.
You can sleep late.
Thank you, Tim. Your policy.
Well, I, I've worked pretty much talked about almost the entire thing, um, minutes ago. She, she wordsmithed it, according, there were seven of us there, so we all had input on, on, uh, what we really thought was important and, and our opinions on everything, and she pretty much wordsmithed it. Um, I think that makes everybody feel happy. Do you have any questions on that? Much of it.
Well, I appreciate you, um, summarizing, uh, well, what we did here, or what we did in the policy meeting. And, um, I think it reflects pretty accurately, quite accurately, what we did in the policy meeting. This is here for us to look at and, um, discuss if there's any discussion necessary. Like you said, it's pretty much things that we've already done, like, ideas of what we've done a lot. E P A C respective this year or this, this past, somewhere that passed up, which, uh, certainly had an impact on their ventilation on that cast up, it's had been part of the discussion, I think we all had that, the, the part of the, uh, policy, whatever, something, I think.
I think we're all gonna try to be very positive, I'm hopeful that we're gonna have to. Seventeen percent population, that's excellent.
Or whatever. Hey, we have a motion to approve.
Prove, second.
Hey, please, we have a segment to approve the, uh, of nineteen, another, tell them the self-traditions, made for the discussion. I would say aye.
Aye.
I'm, I'm, both, period.
Our next meeting is on December sixteen. Um, it would really, I, I'd like to make a request like Tim had, because we have so many, um, policies that are really affecting the school, it would really be nice if we could all be in attendance to be able to solve some of these issues.
That's what you're suggesting, I would predict you're suggesting it be at six forty-five.
So that's, well, even if she doesn't have to be there that early, we're still gonna do.
It's a great tax start.
It is a great tax start, we could, no, I think six, eight, five.
Donna, I know who I can work outside of this meeting, but is, are there any, um, specific policy agenda items that you have in mind right now?
I don't, that's what I was gonna ask you, what's on this one?
The only, I guess.
Because we talked before the meeting about that, but I don't think that has to be dealt with.
I don't have, usually I end up having a list of, here's a statute changer, here's something.
Oh, like January?
I don't have anything.
Okay. That's needing to be determined. We'll be there on Wednesday, yeah.
So no policy meeting on the sixteen?
No policy on the sixteen.
We still have to come.
Probably more likely in January.
Yeah. Well, we can review, we'll discuss it earlier.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Hi, W A S P, uh, the, uh, W A S P Commission, State Commission's coming up, uh, January nineteenth, point first. Thank everybody who's interested, has signed up, I know Kate has sent in the registration, so thank you, Kate. Want it for that, do you have anything on that, Tim?
No. Flaxed. Like, we were conventions, and I hope for, but I am, we have a bird, that's pending.
Be going, Jeff will be going, in and out.
And always helps me to have somebody that I know that I can say, did they really just say this? Are we gonna eat like this again?
All right, thank you. Hey, new business, employee transaction. Resignations, one resignation, I'm sorry, notifications. I have a motion to approve. Say to approve the resignation, always pay for say aye.
Aye.
I'm, both, period. And we have a comment for, uh, for study hall lunch aid, we have motion to approve that. Hey, move, second. Contract, any further discussion? Uh, all, pay for say aye.
Aye.
All right, all right, period. Here we have no donations. Hey, discussion and action on board this time. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Student, sorry, there's some stupid behaviors. Spoiling, I believe, there on my, on the first part of the thing, if you have the first slide open the entire time, so if you remember back, oh, one of the months this school year, we talked about how we're gonna give the, uh, youth risk behavior survey, which we give every other year, uh, to our students, and then, uh, the best, which we give every year to the ninth and the eleventh grade students. Y R B S, uh, number of questions looking at school climate, student behaviors, amongst other things, uh, the best screeners, uh, the mental health screener, uh, that we give to freshmen and junior, and we'll be finishing up those different. With students and families of the week. But when we looked at the Y R B S, we've always, uh, or not always, but recently had an issue with it because the state, um, runs the survey and we don't get our results back until the spring. They do a good job with giving us the results and giving some cross walks on questions and how they relate to one another, and that will be a really useful report that we could talk about, uh, in a later session when we get those results. But we had some, uh, questions that we wanted answers to earlier in the school year, uh, we wanted to take and start working with our students and with our staff on these, uh, questions with, uh, Principal Kurt being new. It was good for him to be able to see some results and, and, and start getting some of the work that he's been doing with the, uh, principal's cabinet, uh, uh, with that as well, so we're just gonna review what those, uh, questions yielded for us, and it's gonna lead into a, a report that, uh, Becky and, uh, Deb have compiled on, uh, some of these items as well. The first question, and this is, remember, we, we've talked about this a lot, I'll, I'll talk about it in my, uh, beginning of year, end of year reports, this is the number I really care about, as I see it as a, uh, building block for learning. And that is, do you feel like you belong at your school, do you feel like you belong at Arrowhead? We saw some great results come out of this, uh, historically, since we started giving the Y R B S, this number had sat around seventy-four to seventy-five percent every year that we had given the survey. Uh, in these additional questions, we jumped up to seventy-eight point five, could be for a number of reasons. Larger sample size, we had the biggest response that we've ever had from our student body that would have to do with the way that we administer the survey. Uh, it could also be some things that we'll be working on for a long time, starting to take root and take full. One of the other great things from the way that we gave the survey is that in the Y R B S, it says yes or no, a binary answer, or binary choices. Uh, and ours, we put a not sure, we've got a, the five-point biker, strongly agree, agreed, not sure, disagree, strongly disagree. Giving the kids an option to say not sure, uh, seems like that took away from the amount of no's or disagreed with that. So what we always thought was a twenty-five to twenty-six percent, uh, portion of our student body who felt like they didn't belong at Arrowhead. What we found is that a certain portion need to be able to say that they don't know if they feel like they belong yet, uh, not enough information. And disagreed, uh, and strongly disagreed down to six percent. So then we gave options on, uh, almost all these questions for them to comment. It is a long time to go through all the comments, but that's what we did. Process for going through comments is, because it's all free writing, you have to start grouping like term comments that are exactly the same, along with it, and then find out which responses keep coming up, and that's what I've done, you'll see those in subsequent slides as well, I numbered them out here just because I know that we've had a lot of interest in this question. So when students feel like they belong, they, number one response is they feel like they belong because they have friends. When they feel like they don't belong, they comment on social atmosphere and feeling like they don't have friends. Feeling like you have friends at school, like feeling like people are nice, is kind of an overarching theme that we're gonna see as we go through the survey. They put a lot of stock into friendships and connections with each other within the school more than anything else. Uh, second, that they feel like it's friendly, nice, uh, warm welcoming atmosphere. Number two reason why they feel like they don't belong at schools, they feel like the school's unfamiliar to them, so a lot of students saying like, I'm a freshman, or I transferred in, the school's unfamiliar to me. Uh, feel like they belong, uh, a lot mentioned course and co-curricular offering, saying I can find things that I'm interested in here, and by the, by finding courses and co-curriculars that I'm interested in here, I can find people that I like and wanna be friends with because we have similar interests. Feeling like you don't belong at school, there was a lot with just like one or two mentioned, so, um, just put that in there as a number three. Uh, question, do you feel comfortable talking to at least one staff member, about seventy-five percent said yes, about twenty-five percent said no. Again, what are the qualities of feeling comfortable with talking to a, a staff member? They feel like the teachers are nice, they feel like they're trustworthy, comfortable, cool was a fun one that we heard, uh, time and time again, but again, I think when, when they think of a cool teacher, they think of somebody who's, uh, like, nice, warm, welcoming, understanding person. Uh, when they said that they don't feel comfortable, uh, they said that they don't know them that well, they don't trust them, or not comfortable talking to them, or just prefer not to talk in general. Teachers are accessible if help is needed on coursework, uh, these numbers were good to see, just because we know that at times, um, students have to meet with teachers outside of school hours before or after school, or hope that there's like a prep here that lines up or go throughout their lunch. But in the, uh, course in the, said that they agree with it, the big things were, yeah, my teachers let me know when they're available, and I take them up on that. Uh, using email is been an efficient way to get ahold of our, our teachers and have that communication with them. And again, you see like that personal disposition matters, right, they're nice, they're welcoming, they're caring, I feel like I can approach them. Five percent, uh, disagreed or strongly disagreed, they felt like their teachers were just too busy, uh, to me, that they didn't answer emails in an efficient manner, um, or that the help they got was, uh, not helpful to them. And then nine point four, not sure, wrapped up in that is also like, I don't need help, so I don't know. Arrowhead feels friendly and welcoming, a lot more students are unsure whether the school feels friendly and, uh, welcoming with that neutral, like sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't, uh, feeling than, uh, I think I would have expected, I would have expected that to be higher with emphasis we place on just like having that warm welcoming atmosphere. So we see, uh, sixty-six, uh, percent with agreement, and again, a very, like, it is amazing how many times when we look at the comments, they just put like, people are nice. People are nice, like, it's a lot of like, people are nice responses, um, so there wasn't much more than that when they said that, uh, why it feels friendly and welcoming. Uh, this one with, uh, the disagree, we start to get into it, and we'll see in the last slide I have for you, some really interesting comments about just the way students feel about them and themselves when we ask them, hey, what, what would be, what could we do to improve climate around here, but they say like, people are not nice, they're mean, they're bullying, I feel about the majority, they're judging. And they're talking about each other, right, in this. We think back to that first slide when we talked about why, don't you feel like you belong at Arrowhead, I don't have friends, why, do you feel like you belong at Arrowhead, I have friends? They put a lot of emphasis on how they interact with each other, um, the amount of friendships they had, and what those relationships are like. Involved or plan to be involved in co-curricular activities, uh, high percentage are involved or plan to be involved, lower percentage is not, again, um, just work, don't want to, need to focus on, uh, homework was a, another big one, a lot of working and just need to focus on homework. Uh, bullying, again, uh, the, uh, Principal Kurt and, uh, AP's, uh, Kerdowski, we'll talk a little bit more on, uh, this one and what they see with, uh, bullying, harassment at Arrowhead. But have you been bullied on Arrowhead grounds in the, in the past twelve months? Twelve point seven said yes. About like two hundred and sixty students. Fourteen percent of that twelve percent say that they alerted staff. Numbers got a little bit wonky with this, so when you take that number, it's about thirty-five students that would say that, but fifty responded that they alerted staff, so. So there was some inaccuracy or some inconsistencies in how they were answering questions we could take from that.
So yeah, was this based on they witnessed bullying or?
No, this is like, I have been bullied.
They have.
Yeah, they felt like they have been bullied, I suppose. So fourteen percent of that twelve percent, uh, feel like they, or say that they alert staff. Of that fourteen percent who say that they alert staff, twenty-two, uh, point seven percent of that felt like nothing was done. We'll go into more details of that later, but we know that sometimes when students report back to us, they feel like nothing was done, we know that something was done, it's just that we can't tell them what was done, and so that they can feel like that. Sometimes they feel like that because they feel like the bullying gets worse, so again, of the fourteen percent who alerted staff after a report was made, nine point two felt like it got worse. Twenty-six point eight percent felt like it stayed the same. Thirteen point six felt that it improved and fifty point four percent felt that it stopped completely. Anecdotally, within this, I will tell you that, one of the harder things, right, we see the amount that make the report, so of twelve point seven percent, we know that, or from this, we see that eighty-six percent don't report it. So I felt like I was bullied, and eighty-six point four percent don't report it to school staff. Of those fourteen percent who do report it, um, when they feel like it got worse, I, I, I work with a student who has flat out told me, I will not report bullying because I feel like it gets worse. Because I've reported it before, and I feel like it gets worse, and I say, have you reported it once it gets worse, because we have progressive discipline measures that we take, because when, uh, Deb and Becky meet with students who have, uh, uh, conducted or perpetrators of bullying, there is this, you will cease all activities, you know, cease contacts, cease activities with this person, you will not do this again, it's very spelled out. Many students come back, and we know sometimes they just don't come back after that initial piece, and he told me, under no circumstances is he going to, you know, report it again, and so trying to work with that student on, for your reporting. So twelve point seven say yes, eighty-seven point three said no, interesting enough, location is very evenly distributed, so, uh, that's like cafeteria, hallway, classrooms. It's, it's distributed throughout the school and all the options that we give them.
For grades.
For you know, grades?
Like, so, is, is it twelve point seven percent across each of the four grades or do you need some spikes and some like?
We will get a lot of that really, really good broken down data, um, when we get the Y R B S results. So I can probably go back and, and, and do a scan and, and look through the grade and provide those graphs, um, at a later time, but I'd have to go back into my, uh, spreadsheets to get that, get that information.
How deep do you go into this whole discussion on bullying, like the points program at the beginning of the school year?
We concentrate mostly on proactive measures and how to treat, right?
Correct, it's one of the lessons that we do, the Arrowhead way, and we break it down with the kids in the various groups, we have student panels that talk about it, things we'll look for. So it's definitely something that we try to be proactive about and, you know, get the kids to step forward and, and not only, um, you know, don't be that bystander, we need each other, and in order for this to be the best place we want it to be, we need everybody's voice to be heard. We need each other and in order for this to be the best place we want it to be, we need everybody's voice to be heard.
Cameras are worth awaiting gold with this stuff too. It really helps. More on bullying. So then we see, ask a question, have you been bullied electronically? Twelve percent say yes, so very similar numbers to the previous slide. He said twelve percent said that they felt like they've been bullied over the last twelve months. Twenty-three percent say that it was at school. Seventy-seven percent say it's not at school, right? So it's night off school grounds. We've talked and discussed it before means that our hands become really tied. When it's not on school property in terms of what we can do or what we can legislate. I think Laura gave the example last time of like how you. Definitely, and I think we all would have thought that we could have delivered punishment in a case that seemed like it definitely had bled into school at that point. And then the decision came back that they still, it still wasn't, what was the terminology that it still hadn't affected school? Enough to punish an act that happened outside of school is bullying. And so you can always go for disruption, you know, to the classroom environment, something like that. But when it happens outside of school, it becomes harder and harder and harder to. Lovely the, you know, punishment stipulation that we have for bullying at Arrowhead. How many think that bullying and harassment is a problem at Arrowhead? We see it split into about thirds. So about thirty percent agree that it is or strongly agree. About thirty-three percent say that they disagree or strongly disagree that it's a problem in Arrowhead. And then we have the not sure at about thirty-eight percent. So spread out across, I guess, you know, perceptions there on what they see as a problem or not a problem at Arrowhead.
I don't understand that the prior slide said, what is the prior one? Eighty-seven point three percent say.
That's what they've experienced it, but like, so if I haven't experienced it, but I know that Jeff was mean to you earlier in the meeting and he does it a lot, you know, that. Then I think like, I'm like, yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't experience it, but I got friends and like, I, I feel and I see pain, right? With social media too. When you're scanning through and like, you can see this stuff on social media, you know, I think that there's awareness of something that speaks to like, how often do kids see it? And then like, you know, the perception of it, it's going to be like. I think it's a bigger problem because I might not experience it, but I know that other people are, I see it happening. This is a great question and we've done some work already just based off of the information that we got from this slide. So we asked the question at the end, what are some suggestions that you have to improve school climate? Number one still, right? So we looked at how many presenters think it's a problem, but the students came out and they said. Increased awareness of what is going on because you know, we talked about it before, we know that kids are sneaky sometimes with the behaviors they do. But the kid said, be aware of what's going on, be aware of the meanest harassment and bullying and make sure people are held accountable for it. Number two, I was really interested in how often I heard or I read responses like this, we have to be nicer to each other. We have to do this. We, there was like, there was a very strong. Sentiment in the suggestions to improve school climate that students would say, we, 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 we have to do this, you know. And get together. And so we know that like students are interested in doing this kind of work. And some of the work that we've already done has started to like leverage some ideas for like, how can we start to promote that? They really are interested in school spirit, like assemblies, gatherings, getting back together. They, you know, you think about how long it's been that we've been living in the COVID world and how much they miss school. I was meeting with a junior the other day and I said, oh my goodness, like you haven't been here for like a normal year yet. Even this year is somewhat disrupted because we have all this illness, you know, going around and people getting back in the swing of things. And so just remember that there's that yearning to be together. Teaching inclusivity, promote inclusivity. They talked about dress codes, kids always want a less strict dress code. Team building, getting to know classmates better. And that's something that when we've done breakout groups with our Arrowhead Way group, we have students that sit on that as an advisory panel. They, 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 they talked about some really good ideas and that's the things like students, a lot of times know more than we do. For getting out and doing some like team building, just getting to know classmates better. They see if they know, they say like, you know, it's harder to. Be mean to somebody if you know them, right? Or if you really feel like you understand them and you have some kind of relationship to them. So they want to mix more outside of their just normal social groups. Yes. And so part of, so part of what we've talked about just last month in the Arrowhead. Way team and we'll be bringing it back next Tuesday is we have these groups that are randomized at wings. And from your group that's randomized, one of the things that we do is we have our wings mentors. And wings mentors check in with their wings group or supposed to kind of throughout that freshman year. And Thomas Cooper does a lot of work with the wings mentors along with Deb Perdowski. And every year since they've, since I've been aware of it, they have tried to get the wings mentor more involved. One of the things that we discussed with our student panels, the Arrowhead Way Committee is leveraging those already randomized wings groups, bringing them back together somehow, some way. And just having those discussions and because realizing that, you know, it's not, that's not the group that they make forever friends with. Some might become forever friends, but it's again, like a more randomized study and we already have that in place to kind of. Be able to do some of these activities perhaps. One of the tough things to remember is. As we try to do all this stuff, we do have some like limitations, right? So we need to learn science, we need to learn math, we need to like read, right? And so we always kind of like lay out and think about the schedule and the cost benefit that we're going to run to some of these items. And if we want to promote these things, then we're going to have to figure out how that fits with a timeframe or a schedule. Leveraging the lunchroom is a big, you know, piece for us that we could possibly do. If we, at times like today, we had a lesson on how can you wisely choose classes through a homeroom type environment? And so there's opportunities where we know that we've taken from time from classes to build in a extended like third hour class to do some of this work. And so there's some opportunities there, but again, it's shortening the amount of time they have in classes. And so that's something that we're always having to consider when we add stuff in, we know that it's, you know, it has to help someone.
One of the other limitations you have obviously is just the campuses. Do you try to buddy up some of the sophomores with freshmen? So that they can interact with them and see them on a more regular basis or how is that?
The wings mentors are definitely breakdown for grades.
So there's sophomores, anybody can apply to be a mentor. There's sophomores, juniors and seniors. And then they get broken down into the groups with the students. And then like we said, we try to connect with them as much as we can with the freshmen. Whenever we can. So yes, in fact, that note I just put on my thing for to include more sophomores because of the differences in the campus.
Yeah, I know that that's something that my girls specifically, you know. It's exciting for them in marching band, they have friends from all over the place, you know, but then, you know, they get back into their regular school year after, you know, that's done and they're like, oh, I never get to see my junior friends or my senior friends. And also, you know, being on the same campus too, it's going to make a big impact.
And we know that that's a big place where there's an opportunity for mentoring, right? It's in those co-curricular activities, which is again, you know, why, why the big push there. Sometimes we wish that we were one campus because some of like the, and I'll say it, the freshman boy behaviors might be taken care of if like Ben Fredison is just down. And they're like, I'm not going to do that. Look at that guy.
On the other hand, of our fourteen year olds, we don't necessarily want to see the seniors holding hands and smooching around in the corner. We don't need fourteen year olds seeing that. So.
Plus and minuses, plus and minuses. Students also talk about more flexibility from teachers, especially when it comes to expectations for like due dates and homework. They talk a lot about the ten period day, how many classes they have and assignments and tests. And all those classes and the fact that they're in a lot of co-curricular activities or working after school. So, you know, the last staff meeting we had. Was yesterday and we gave a lot of info, I gave that entire presentation to staff and then a activity that Adam's principal cabinet did. Looking at just like student issues, what they saw as challenges and what they saw as growth areas for Arrowhead. And, you know, we, we focused a bit on, on this slide and teachers within their groups for a good thirty minutes. Brainstorm based off of student suggestions to improve school climate. What are little things that we can do, which are things like, I can do that tomorrow, right? We can all start doing this tomorrow to improve school climate. What are things that might take one to six months for us to plan and implement that we can do to base on, to improve school climate based on feedback from students? And then what are things that might take six months to a year, big things to implement? Those are all set in my office, a lot more reading for me to do and go through. I've started, but again, a lot of, you know, ideas coming out of that and what we could possibly do. So we're taking the information from students, giving it back to teachers. Starting to like formulate these ideas, working with the student body to dig into these items more and generate ideas as well. So that's been a nice gift from doing the survey earlier. And I just mentioned the last one too, like that flexibility, if they can see breaks in homework. So.
Yeah. Is there more presentation?
I mean, I don't know when we want to do questions. Maybe we'll do the full, you want to do full presentation? Let's do, we might answer questions throughout the, so I'll turn it over to Principal Kurt and AP's Jordan and Perdowski.
Sure. I just want to jump in. Just to get a little bit more background, you've heard our student survey results. And then in January, the board is also going to hear our parent survey results. We're in the middle of tabulating. We have a hundred and forty-six pages of results and comments that we're summarizing, very similar to how Adam Hall summarized where. What are the percentages and what are the most common questions or common comments? So the board will hear that survey and then in personnel committee now in January, our staff survey, it's similar. Summary of results. Based on our students' results then, and just board conversations recently about student behaviors. We wanted to give a presentation more broad about our student behaviors, which we see, what things do we have in place, proactive pieces? Reactive pieces. And I think that will help, help all of us aboard and even our broader community to see how much we see how bullying on, how much is done here at Arrowhead. So let's.
Well, before we get going, I just want to mention that it's, it's a. Doubtless and a dedicated man. And when you ask him what he wants to do on his birthday, he says present some more.
Just calling my youngest daughter's birthday. So this is like the last year that we can get away with being like, it's not your birthday, it's tomorrow. We're also very similar.
Thanks for the time tonight. I think you received a similar presentation last night. You know, as, as board members and members of the community, you often get questions. You get things sent to you and the more informed you can be on what we do, we, we hope to arm you with, with, you know, good responses. And, and the ability to navigate those discussions and those conversations. So that's, that's kind of our goal tonight. And to those brave souls who are watching the video recorded later, they can get a good insight into what we do as well. So just as an overview, we're just going to really kind of define what we do, discipline and behavior and what it looks like in school. We're going to help everybody kind of understand the context that we'll be working in and we'll give you the black and white data. And then how we respond and how we are proactive. So there will be some factual, some anecdotal, and really just a kind of a whole picture of what goes on on a day to day basis. So we look at discipline in three different ways, preventative and preventative is, is, and I can say this anecdotally, it's been in six different districts and. And Arrowhead a second to none in the preventative measures taken to. To create a situation for students to succeed and to be able to navigate tough social situations. And I say that because of how many things, wings is the, probably the best example, there are schools who try to learn how to do a wings program in their school because of the impact it has. As a first year student coming into a high school. So the preventative measures are just those, we don't really know what the behavior is, but we do know that research shows the better, more comfortable student feels, the more accepted they feel. The more relationships they have, the more success they have throughout their high school years in all avenues, academic and social. So we do a tremendous amount of preventative measures here and there's a list at the end that we'll share with you. Supportive are those, they're a little different in, in nature where we know a student. Who makes maybe consistent poor choices. We know this because they're dealing with something at home. They're dealing with something in their personal life. You know, the, the things that are affecting them as they come into school. So when we talk about supportive, we want to get that good right then and help them navigate the, the. The difficult choices they have to make each day. So that's where we're aware of a situation and we want, it's a, it's a proactive measure in nature, but. We want to be as supportive as possible to try to help that student navigate tough social situations, family situations, academic situations. So that's where we know the behaviors and we're, we're doing what we can to address them before a poor choice is made. And then corrective is probably where you would see the most traditional type, includes discipline. But not only discipline, we use restorative justice as well. There's a lot of different measures that, that we take as a team to respond when our first two approaches haven't, haven't worked. So three tiers to our, to our approach, the discipline in school.
So Oxford Language defines behavior, how one acts or conducts themselves specifically towards, you know, towards others. So one of the things that as Deb Perdowski does, which we're here to have a case for. That I like to use with the students is my little mantra that states, watch your thoughts because they become your words. Watch your words because they become your actions. Watch your actions because they become your legacy. And so when I can break down some of the behaviors with the kids, it's something very real to them. And some of the things that influences our students, you can see, you know, research would say their physical surroundings, the nature of events, their life experiences. Family, the community, society, et cetera. Here at Arrowhead, you know, music, music is huge influence on these kids. Social media, community, and of course, we can't leave out the hormones. Clearly our kids are still helping. And so yes, definitely has an influence on that. So when we break it down even further, we're really looking at two things individually, you know, what they're experiencing socially, emotionally. And then the environment, what have they experienced and what are their surroundings like? Who are their friends? What are they becoming as, you know, as a young adult? Something that's really important to remember is that students are dealing with a lot more now than they ever were before. And I think we're all different ages here and every generation probably has said this or felt this. But two very, very critical things that our kids are going through and even us would be COVID, of course, the pandemic and then social media. It's something we have to think about that our kids had to go through with COVID and again, as adults we did as well, but they had to learn how to learn virtually. That's nothing that they've done before and they were forced to in some cases by being sent home as a close contact. Then they're being sent home as a close contact, but they want to be at school, but we're saying, uh-uh, you have to go home because you were six feet from somebody who's now a positive COVID result. Then you heard the importance of friendships from Adam, which came directly from the kids. When I use throw COVID in there again, and they lost time with their friends, they lost friendships because they were reaching their friends. I had to be home for twelve days, so my best friend is now best friend with somebody else and I'm left out of the loop. It sounds kind of childish maybe to an adult, but that is huge to kids. So COVID did that to our kids. In addition to losing friends and time with friends, sadly, they lost family members. They may have lost grandparents to COVID. Parents, siblings, aunts and uncles, they have lost jobs. In addition to that, we talked about relearning school and again, not saying that that was a loss, but. When Adam talks about the junior and I work with juniors every day, some of those kids have not been around eleven hundred kids in a year and a half. They don't remember how to maybe behave in the cafeteria. They don't remember how to go through the chapter and what's important to maintain and. Succession of maybe a math course. So COVID has put our kids into something that none of us had to go through as children and then you throw in the hormones like Deb said. And all the other things that we go through. The second big thing that our kids are dealing with is social media. Unfortunately, social media gives our students a chance to hide behind their phone, say rude things, unkind things, sometimes lies. But they can hide behind it, they can do it without anybody knowing. It can be dangerous. The kids don't know who they're talking to. Pictures, posts, those travel a lot faster than the notes we used to pass in study hall. So this is like in an instant, it's out there and you can't take it back. If we could try to get Instagram to take something down. We could go through the line and try to find out where did it start and have that erased, but it's out there and you cannot take that back. And it's really not truly ever deleted. It creates distraction, driver, driving distraction, classroom distractions. So social media and COVID are two very large things. We have to always remember the classroom and the homes. Workplace, our kids have really been put to the river and that is affecting them academically, socially and emotionally.
So one of the toughest things that we deal with is context and we deal with it, and it's a challenge for, for a couple of reasons. One is we, by statute, cannot share much of the information that we work with. And we can't even share it with you as a board because you don't have a vested deliberate interest in that student's success. You have a whole, a whole school to navigate and if situations ever do come to you, you have to be objective. And so we cannot share information with you, we can't share information with other students, with the other parents, with, with the parents of the student who we're working with. So context is very important as we deal with it. And so I have a couple of examples here, and this is a real example that I dealt with, okay? A student, a, a young, young lady came down to my office and said, uh, heard two boys talking behind her, they were in groups. And she went back to her seat and heard two boys saying, I'm so tired of them, I'm seriously going to kill them. Obviously, that's, that, that throws a flag up right away. I went up to the class and this is what was killed. Okay? I just remember thinking how fortunate it was that the, the student who came down to talk to me didn't tweet that out, didn't send that out on a Snapchat to their group that this is what they heard, that the, the two boys behind her talking about. And these things happen all too often where instead of coming to us, which is what we, what we need to happen, we deal with situations like these, the teacher actually pinned the fly up on the report. So out of context, that comment is very scary. It was scary to me when the student came down to hear it. But, so another situation here, just, this is the foremost image on, on context, okay? So you see an image and you see some people looking at it. This is historical from people who are smarter than me. Well, this is the true image. Right? So here's what everybody's looking at. We have two people who are too close to the situation, looking at something that they can't identify. And here's the bull situation, okay? So it, it makes our jobs very difficult and frustrating and sad at times that we cannot share a full story. Because there's, we have an education where you say there's three sides to a story, right? Both sides and the truth. And it makes it very hard for us to work through situations when we can't share all the details outside of the immediate situation. So just something that we always keep in mind and it makes, makes what we do very challenging. So bullying has been a hot topic. So this is a definition or a, a comment of definition, straight from DPI. And we bolded, bolded a couple of the words that really frame our work toward bullying. So it's unwanted aggressive behavior, where a real or perceived power imbalance is involved. And the behavior is repeated or has the potential to be repeated. There are many times when students come to us and say, we're being bullied. I'm sitting in the lunchroom, Laura threw a piece of food at me, okay? I feel like I'm being bullied. It was, it was deliberate, she threw it at me. Well, come to find out, Laura threw it at seventeen other people. Okay? If Laura threw it seventeen times at me, absolutely, there's, there's probably a bullying situation there based on definition. But the fact that she's throwing it everywhere means that she's just choosing poor behaviors. Okay? And so we really have, these two ladies do an amazing job at filtering through all the facts and all the details to find out what really happened. And getting to the point where do we define that as bullying or is it poor choices and poor behaviors by our students? You'll see in the last slide that we have, one of the things about working in high schools, kids never get older. It's a fact, right? Kids never get older. And we get a, a crew of students in as freshmen, and we know this academically, the, the stronger the freshman learning that takes place, the better off they'll be in every year. It's the same way with behaviors, the more that we can do with them as freshmen, the stronger they will be. But every year we get a new group of freshmen and, and we work with them as, as much as we can and we work with them through the practices we have. And we do as much as we can to teach them to make good choices, to understand, to just to have empathy and, and, and to, to make good choices throughout the four years. Some we miss, it's natural, you know? And so every, every time we interact with a student and the situation, there's zero judgment from, from any of us because we know their kids. And so as we work through trying to define what is bullying and what is not, even when we have boys, there's a reason a student bullies them. They, they were never taught, they, they're struggling to, to understand empathy. They're struggling to put themselves in somebody else's shoes. They have other things in their life affecting them. So we have to understand that as, as we work with students and know students deserves anything better than, anything other than for us to help them understand and grow from every situation that they're in. So these are three links from the Wisconsin DPI that show really good, a chart and activity and scenarios. And so some of these scenarios, we wanted to show you just to show you some of the situations that we deal with. And so we're showing you direct from the Wisconsin DPI website, which gives a pretty clear definition of what is bullying and what is conflict? What is an argument? What is poor behavior choices? And then Devin, Becky, you're also going to share some of the examples that they deal with where at times it's come to them as a, as an instance of bullying. And when you really filter through the details, it's, it's more conflict because it's something that's hurt.
Might be kind of difficult to read, they're not that long, so I'll just say Molly and Amara have been best friends. They got into an argument and Amara now claims that Julie is her new best friend, so Molly is hurt. Now you saw the definition and you heard Adam speak to you, so this technically is a conflict, it's not an act of bullying. We've had similar situations where the friends will say, for whatever reason, I don't want you Sue to sit at our lunch table anymore. Tim, you can't come with us to the homecoming dance, even though we're planning on all going out as a group. That isn't bullying, that's a one time, it's unfortunately hurtful for Molly in this case. And you do have to know, just because it's not defined as bullying, Deb and I aren't saying, oh, just a conflict, you'll get bullied, of course not. So we would work with Molly, we'd try to watch her for her, find out if there's a way we can mend what's happening with Amara. Maybe she can get to be friends with Julie, we'd find her ways to meet new friends, maybe get her to different clubs, different activities. We have lunch buddies going on right now, we maybe ask her to come during lunch and then play board games with other kids who maybe don't feel comfortable much. She may meet friends there. So we will still obviously work through a conflict, not to just bully it. But this is a very good example of where Molly might feel like she's being bullied, but by definition, she's not. The second example, a group of six grade girls call Sarah names, starts rumors and encourage others not to talk with Sarah. Absolutely bullying. Had this just been girls calling Sarah a name a one time, again, on one occasion, would be a conflict. This becomes bullying because you've got multiple things here, name calling, rumors starting, kind of ganging up and having others not talk with her. You've got an imbalance of power that Adam mentioned, you've got a group versus one girl, so that again is bullying. Excuse me. And this, we see this a lot, either partnership groups, kind of like the top one, or even when you've got the dating going on. For some reason, when one person is held of that relationship, the other side wants to really cast that vote to make sure nobody else talks with them. So that does happen often, definitely crazy. So I just wanted to explain the, the conflict and the bullying difference and then Deb's going to touch on the third one, the social media for bullying.
Yes, so mine is that Lisa and Kyle were dating and then recently broke up. And Kyle's new girlfriend has been posting negative and hurtful comments about Lisa on social media and asking others to join in. So in this case, we've got an established pattern, there's, it's happened multiple times and other people, they solicited other people to join in. So this would be considered bullying rather than conflict. You know, if it's just a breakup between the two and we were working through something with them, you know, with our counselors or whoever we could get to get involved, it might just be conflict. But when you take it to the next level and you're now posting or you're soliciting others to be a part, it's definitely bullying. There is case law on this, this particular case, it's a BB Prince case, there are notes on DPI. And what that talks about a little bit is about the posting, there's posting that happened at school and then posting that happened at home. So there's a fine line of how much a school can get involved in. If we find out, I mean, we're always going to respond. And if we find out that the posting is happening on school, there's consequences. If we find out that it's happening outside, but you know, potentially causes a, it could cause, you know, a negative environment in school. Again, we're going to get involved, we involve the parents, we follow through. In this case, we would do a cease and desist contract between the two, talk through, you know, what that means. That just means you're ceasing all negative words, actions towards, you know, the opposite part. We may also then even go a little bit further by meeting with the kids weekly, checking in with them, how are the behaviors going? You know, thumbs up, thumbs down, little things that we can find out to make sure that is it still going on? Or are we moving in the right direction towards resolution? So the, the next slide, this was some trend data that we have pulled together and the numbers might be pretty small. But on top, we have the twenty-one, twenty-two current data as of November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. So you look at the referrals, total referrals about two eighty-three, when specifically broken down between harassment and bullying and fighting. Couple incidents at South Campus in regards to fighting. And then we had the harassment and bullying, you know, five reported incidences. And again, this is, these, everything logged here is reported, so I want to make sure that, that that's very clear. When we look at the harassment and bullying, fighting and the numbers, remember, we look at the incident as one. So it may, a fight obviously tends to involve more than one person, sometimes, you know, two, two, however many. But we, we talk about the incidents. So in this case, we're talking about specific incidences and it may involve many more students. If you take a look at the trend data, you've got the referrals obviously a little bit lower in twenty-twenty, twenty-one and nineteen, twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty.
Across the whole year?
Across the whole year, yes. And so when you're looking at, at those, obviously, you know, we had students choosing from virtual to being in person. We also had, you know, we also had kids, you know, obviously the numbers are going to be lower when they're not here on Brown, so. When you go back to twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, again, the numbers are a little bit higher, specifically twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. And you will see, you know, some of the proactive steps we took. When we look at this data, it certainly can be very alarming when you're looking at total referrals, you know? And then we break it down by campus, you can get the, the incidences and there's, there's many more categories that, that the behaviors were following. But it certainly warns us to look at the data more closely, you know, where is it happening, what campus? What are the needs? And then wrap ourselves around to, you know, address the behaviors, you know, that are less desirable to make them more desirable.
What's your definition of total referrals? Is that students coming to one of you?
So great question.
By, in a complaint or something?
So total referrals would be referrals sent by teachers. Or if someone does come in to specifically a counselor, Becky and I, we, we are, you know, can add in the referrals as well. On the right-hand side, if you take a look, we've got, you know, some, some trend data on like open enrollment. When you're looking at withdrawals due to bullying and then also transfers into Arrowhead due to bullying in their schools. Some, some data for the, for you guys to take a look at.
So the, I, when you go for the transferred in, so is it like, they were open enrolled at some other school, but they got kicked out and now they're?
Yeah, so one of the reasons you can choose to open and enroll and you can identify is bullying at a previous school district.
So that they were being bullied, oh.
One of the circumstances.
One of the circumstances, yeah. Two things I want to point out here, it seems like a very low number, right? Five, five bullying and harassment. Keep in mind the, the slide that Adam showed, which is very telling, which is only about thirty students have reported. Have stated that they've reported and we've, we've kind of shared some examples of how of those thirty, many probably came to us with what is a conflict? Or what is a poor choice by another student? And we have to kind of clean through that. So the data, you know, all thirty of those were, were addressed and responded to. But when you, when you theme it down, you're only showing five harassment or bullying, it doesn't, it means those other twenty-five were addressed in a different way. The other thing that I want to point out and, and show is, I, I feel very fortunate to work with these two because if you look at just the sheer number, on average, about thousand referrals a year, okay? So that means about five hundred to each of them, if we're just using loose numbers, over a hundred and eighty school days, that's about three per day that these two work with students in groups of students. And, and I know just this week, Deb has spent two days working on two referral situations. Becky spent the first half of one day on one situation. So they are oftentimes very cumbersome. These two spend a significant amount of time trying to get it right, trying to get all the details, trying to get all the facts and trying to support our students and put them in a situation where they can succeed moving forward from whatever situation they're, they're dealing with. That is, it is extremely reflective of the amount of time that these two spent with our students, just, just that, just that black and white number there.
So just to share with you the last five years, with special attention to harassment and fighting. But as you saw with the eleven hundred and one year, there's definitely more than those two events that we have inside where they come to us as referrals. And to be exact, there's twenty-three other events that are in there and I will obviously will not read every one of those, hopefully you can see them. Our top five events would be unexcused absences, tech violation, which is for the most part just cell phone out in the classroom when you shouldn't have your cell phone out. Disruptive behavior, tardiness, so obviously late to class, and academic dishonesty, which can be plagiarism to full-blown cheating. But that's what the academic dishonesty is. Notice how high unexcused absences, that's our largest one. And that's because as we all know as educators, if you're not in school, you're missing out on interaction with the teacher, instruction, social interaction. I mean, it's very important obviously to attend school, to do your best. And again, that goes all the way back to how COVID can hurt some of our kids because they weren't here socially with one another, face-to-face with their teacher, bouncing off one another in the hall, you know, using manners, using kindness. So that's why that one is the largest. With unexcused absences, Deb and I work with our attendance group to help the families get their kids here. It can be riots, it can be the parents don't feel strongly about education, there can be medical reasons, mental health, there's a lot of different reasons that's high. But we work hard with that, which then leads into the next slide. How we respond and thank you, Adam, that's very nice what you said about Deb and I. We do not operate on a one and done. Deb and I would not have a student come in and say, okay, Adam, you did this, therefore this is what you get. It is not that black and white. We need to know, what is your history? What happened to you this morning? What's happened in the past? What, what kind of homelink you have? All of those things play into it. So even though, yes, it takes up a lot of our time, we're doing that to do the right thing. Educate them and hope that that puts an end to or decreases the negative behavior that came to us. So again, I will not read all those, you probably have read any of them. If you notice, you're going to see the word referred a lot. We can't work in a silo, we've heard this phrase years ago, it takes a village, and it really does. We refer out when we have to, Deb and I aren't going to do it alone. We've got school psychologists, we've got Adam, we've got the other Adam, you've got counselors, we've got outside resources. So we will definitely tap into others to help us when the kids need it. Check-in connect and minute mentors, that's like maybe a third of the way down. I think Deb started mentioning that check-in connect, where we see a student who may need additional help than what they're getting. So they're assigned to a teacher or teacher volunteers. So once a week they meet and talk about how are things going, they go through period, they go through attendance. Minute mentors was a daily minute check-in, every day, must go in, how you doing in the morning, and then they just move on. So those are two different things that also happen after referral, but it's not just one and done. A very important thing that we do when we fear safety for the student, safety for the student body, we do have a threat assessment. Deb and I have gone through it, analyzed it with us, and all those are critical. So we just make sure, if a student that's feeling like they want to be harmed to themselves, we go through to see to what level that is. We can bring in the school resource officer, we can bring in crisis workers. Again, it's all level, take it here, take it here, take it here, and then again, what's going to be the best thing for that student and the others. So that, or if we find out there's a threat to the student body where the comic's like, I want to kill them, or I'm going to bring a gun around. Threat assessment comes out, the students brought in and work you back. The final practice, I believe Adam, Gerth mentioned restorative practices. And like I said, Deb and I don't want to just bring you away to give you detention, that doesn't really help what happens, but that's not what we try to do. Try to have the student apologize to the one that it hurt. There can be restitution, community service. I think Deb had mentioned that the cease and desist contract, where we say you can no longer talk to him or her, did that happen? But there's a next step, mediating. We both, I'm sure, had these two students who can't stand each other for whatever reason, okay, you're coming to my office, we're going to talk this through. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But when a student hears how their words or actions actually hurt the other person, it's amazing. He would be amazed what it looks like, but that can probably be amazing, so I just call that a big, big deal, anyone want? If I have to look at Adam and say, wow, I didn't know that hurt you. Adam's going to say, Becky, you didn't know this, but my brother used to say that to me, or my dad's always called me that. So those mediations will be very important, for the kids to see, that's a human being, that's somebody's daughter, that's somebody's son. So the restorative practices are very important. So again, these are all things that the other thing works through when we can, sometimes combination, sometimes just one of them. We do do things with the kids, we hear a lot of them not doing anything. And believe me, we really, really are, we're doing our best, and I said, I know I've been at the academy for a few straight days, I can see the resource officer. Because it's just what we do, we just want to make sure we have all the facts, check the cameras, check witnesses, call the parents, call the other parents. Please know we are doing something even if we can't tell you, or if it's not timely, it does.
That's something to highlight, right? Many of, many of what's out there, much of their response is not visible. That's something to highlight, right? Many of, many of what's out there, much of their response is not visible, right? And so that oftentimes, you know, families are very old school, this is how it was when I was in school, right? You, you want to see a detention, you want to see the kid at the school walking into that room, or you want to see them not at school the next day, right? And so if that doesn't happen, uh, oftentimes you'll feel like, well, they didn't do anything about it. We know that detention centers are some of the least effective uh responses to behaviors. But a lot of what they do here, meetings, uh, you know, referrals to crisis, uh, loss of privileges are not seen. You don't get to see that that student oftentimes doesn't get to go to things or will be a part of things. Um, so a lot of what they do is specific to the student in the incident and often can't be presented.
So the next slide, um, you know, speaks exactly what you brought up, Daryl, is that, you know, what, what do you do when referrals, um, you know, don't come through your teachers and such? And if it comes through a parent, a parent reaches out, send this an email. We have the Speak Up Speak Out, which is an anonymous tip line. That anybody can access off of our webpage and report something that, um, you know, needs addressing. Regardless of the concern, you know, as Adam had stated and Becky, you know, we're on it, we get on it, um, you know, and we do everything we can to meet. You know, the best result and outcome that we are all working, working for. Um, some of the things that, you know, that we've learned over the years, this is my eighteenth year here, is that, you know, we have consistent practices here. Um, and I'd love to say we have consistent behaviors, but I'd rather say we have consistent categories of behaviors. I think year to year, things change based on, you know, what's going on in the community and what's happening, you know, where the students are at, you know, like Becky mentioned, you know, coming out of COVID. You know, brought many more, um, different behaviors, you know, to the front and forefront. So, yeah, so again, you know, it's, it's. You know, what we're above, it's what we love to do. We love making the connections with the kids and the relationships. I, I've never had a student that, um. You know, I mean, it's unique to me, but the student comes in and it's your practice, had the same situations where you're coming in and you're talking about a situation and you're breaking it down, you're doing some restorative practices. You know, they're owning the behavior and then they walk out and say, thank you. And I may have suspended that, and they're still saying, thank you. I've never had that before, but here at Arrowhead, these kids, you know, um, when you really can get past the behavior and emotions that got the behavior. You really start seeing that growth in these kids, and that's what it's about, you know? Um, I took pride in learning the kids at Wings and getting to know them over the two years, but then. You know, passing months, my colleague Becky, you know, and, and hopefully in, in good standing that these kids have learned, um, and have grown over the years to be, you know, better juniors and seniors for her.
So this is what I kind of touched on, uh, the first part of our presentation here, which is the, the sheer quantity uh of quality proactive measures that are, that occur. Here at my school. There is a significant uh amount of effort towards connection with students, towards peer, peer connection. Towards creating relationships, towards checking in with students, um, all on the front end. Uh, and I think that, uh, that. Shockingly enough, when you see that thousand number of referrals for two thousand students, that's not a lot, um, relative. You know, just being my six statistic, I can share that the, the rate is far lower than any other, any other place I've been. I attribute a lot of that to the efforts of our staff, uh, individually in their classrooms, trying to form relationships and trying to understand our kids and showing up their events and showing an interest in their lives. Uh, and the work these two do and the rest of our staff do, uh, to connect with our kids. So there's a lot that happens ahead of time. We've all found that this is the, this is the most effective approach to helping our students make their choices. And it goes back to what we were coming to earlier, there's no solution to students making poor choices, there's no solution to behaviors. My, my two-year-old won't stop punching me. I'm not going to give her away, right? I can't stop.
You asked me about that yesterday.
You know, uh, we, we learn this as parents and, and that our kids, uh, they make decisions based on what they know. And so we, we do our best to help them. If there was a silver bullet to, to behaviors, to bullying, to everything, we would have had it, we would have had it by now, right? No, no school has a silver bullet, otherwise we'd all be doing that. That's something that we would all share, right? Um, because we all want what's best for our kids. Um, and high school students, like I said, never get older and deal with the same. Uh, things every year, and we try to, try different approaches to be as proactive as possible to, to get ahead of them. Our goal in the end. The goal of high school in the end is to create good citizens who leave our walls, right? And so our hope is, even when students are making poor choices, we help them understand, we help them empathize, so that in the future, uh, they make better choices and understand what. Uh, what, what, how they're affecting people, like how their decisions are, are affecting their own lives. So that's our goal. Kids are going to make mistakes. They're always going to make mistakes. Adults make mistakes. And we tell parents that because we have so many parents who come around, it's, I can't believe my, my son or daughter did this. They're such a great kid. They're still a great kid. They make poor choices. Uh, there's, there's no such thing as bad kid, there's bad choices. And so. Our goal is always to help them understand that and help them grow. That is the end of our presentation.
From the data that you saw from students. What was probably the biggest surprise or the thing that's keeping up? And like, okay, how did we solve that?
Yeah, it, 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 it's always the connectedness to, to school. It's the number one. I don't, yeah. Until that number sits at a hundred percent, I, I will consistently think about how can we get students to socialize better? How can we get them to feel like they have friends? Like you see that importance in their comments and how, if you feel like you don't belong at school. How, what they state is, I don't like, I don't have friends, social atmosphere, unfamiliar with the school. That, those, those comments you see just pick up on all those other questions. It's like a negative comment as well. So it's always for me going to be, do, do students feel like they belong and how do we keep increasing that? And it seems like we're trending in the right direction. But it's tireless work, right? We spent, you know, we spent eight years trying to get that number to, to move, um. You know, we've seen it move, but we, we need to keep going at it because. You imagine just going to work every day and being like, I shouldn't be here. I don't belong here. Like, 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 I don't like the people, people don't like me. And that's, and that's where a lot of problems come from too. I'll tell you, you know, some of our. You know, work with some of the students with like the most pervasive behavior issues, whether it's severe or whether it's just all the time. They just, they feel like people don't understand them, staff and students don't understand them. Um, they, they, they feel like they're struggling and they don't know why, like they can't get it. And, and, and it's, it's a key piece to helping our students. Um, and there's a lot of place, there's a lot of things that go into it. When, when we're talking academics. We're talking how can we get students to access this curriculum? How can we get them to be successful in the curriculum, knowing that we're bringing in students with all different kinds of academic capabilities? We talk, uh, we've been talking at length about how, you, you consider that we have seven different feeder schools, we're, we're, we're union districts, and we have, we have. We have kids from seven different COVID circumstances, right? I, I, I don't know if any two feeder schools did it exactly the same. And, and, and so. Uh, you know, being on quarantine and, and, and last year with, you know, virtual back and forth too. And so we have a lot of students that are, uh, learning how to socialize differently now. And even in, even in regular years before COVID. Freshmen coming in, it's always, it's, it's always difficult. It, it's always difficult that like, what's the learning process? How do you adjust to high school? How do you adjust to the fact that like, hey, it's real now? Like, we might have told you that this was important, that you had to do that work in middle school. But, you know, it, it, it now it comes and there's going to be repercussions. You're going to, you know, you feel like, of course, you're going to go to summer school. Like you, you actually have to pass that English language. Um, and, and I know I'm rambling out about the things that keep me up at night, but I can go on for longer if you'd like. But it is, and is that connectedness to school?
I, I agree. Um, you know, the, the hardest thing that I hear out of some freshmen when, when they're connecting with them is that, you know. They're not involved in anything, or they break down friends because they don't have any friends. And right away, I'm thinking those peer mentors, you know, and how would we get them connected? Because that sense of belonging is so huge. The, the most important thing that when you ask them what, what's important to them, it's not academics, it's friends, and having friends. And so how do we just make that happen?
Right. And I, one of the things that I, some of the stats that I saw there, it's like, even though the number's low, it's like, okay. Eighty-seven percent don't feel their ability, but thirteen percent is. And when you do the math, it's like two hundred and fifty kids here at Arrowhead. That feel it. And it's like, you know, I'm glad it's, you know. But you just want to make it, so it's a lot less than that. It's over two hundred.
What is too many, right?
Exactly.
If that was ninety-nine point nine percent, we know that there, we have one kid who is feeling like they're being bullied.
Right. And one of the other things that was like, look, when I was looking at the data, I think he had a que, he had the question. Does the student feel like they have, they can go to a staff member for a question? And I think it was around seventy-six percent or something. And, you know, when you just think of that other twenty-four percent where, hey, they're not reporting the bullying. Is, you know, what can we do to have them feel a little bit more connected to the staff? You know, is it a wing thing where, hey, you have a student mentor, but you also have a, you know. A faculty or a staff member that you can go to, to, you know, when there is a problem. You know, going to a peer is one thing, but, you know, not feeling intimidated to go into one of you or, you know, on the staff, you know, that's a pretty bad to overcome. And with me having three kids, I know, I've worked, have been in a lot of communication with Mrs. Paradowski freshman year, but over the years with my three kids. And, you know, when we addressed, we talked about it, I mean, she got to the root cause of the issue. You know, I applaud her for that, for bringing her in. It hasn't had, has the volume that we have.
She's done doing her job.
One of the things we don't even bring up here is.
But that, no, it's not.
It's all coming from home.
That's why I'm sorry.
It's all come from different homes.
Yes.
And, and that's as much a part of all this. Is that's where a lot of it started, or is it?
We take care of where there's different things we don't know. And you don't even, that's not even here. That's, but that's what comes.
I would say that's, that's a big frustration. You saw seventy-seven percent of the online bullying isn't happening here. And we don't have control over it, but we leave in the bedroom on a Saturday.
Right.
So when we heard, um, a community member, she was saying. We need to solve the problem at Arrowhead and we needed grassroots movement. Hardly feels like, and I hope the board sees, we have a lot in place. A grassroots movement with parents and about online, that would be really valuable. And if someone, if parents wanted to start that and bond together to do something about that seventy-five, seven percent of online stuff going on. Boy, we'd be happy to have a representative on that team or group, whatever it would take. That's, that's where our hands are tied. We cannot be involved, but what we're involved, we can't discipline what happens outside of school, outside of school hours. That's, that's hard, but with so much in place. But even with all of that in place, there's always going to be a bullying problem. It just all exists at Arrowhead and wrapped in high school, at Elbrook High School. And you might hear, you know, for a dozen years, there's been a problem at that school bullying. Well, gosh, high schoolers are only here for four years. So they might come in as freshmen, we might whip them into shape, along with those parents, and they're possibly seniors. Because there's still going to be a bullying problem because the next freshman comes in, they have three, four years returning over a class of students.
Such a freshman every year.
Right, every, yes, every year.
Well, I'll tell you something, there was a point, oh, fifty years ago, by that school.
No way.
I, I have to say, I really appreciate how you guys personalize things and bring students together. To, to have them see the impact that they're making and some of the examples that you're sharing. Uh, Dev, my wife loves you. She, I mean, she cannot say. In, in our family situation, and I just, I love the fact that you guys are personalizing it because you're really educating our kids. A lot more than just in the books and, you know, things that they can take and use for the rest of their lives. I think that's awesome. I mean, obviously, we still have work to do. You know, we were all in this room when we listened to the, um, the GSA group. Um, I, I, I hope we can continue to, you know, move down that path. I'm sure that you guys, you know, have some ideas. Uh, I'm excited about our forums and I hope that, you know, the, the staff encourages students to come to those forums. Because I think one of the biggest things that can help is when there's dialogue, when kids feel like they're being heard. You know, and just like when they have to interact with each other and realize, oh, my gosh, you know, I didn't realize this, this impacted you that way. I think that dialogue, that open dialogue is going to be a big component as well. So thanks, thanks for all you guys.
You know, when I say those, it's so rare that we get a graduate level seminar, you know, right here in college. Uh, one of the things that I appreciated most is that, looking at the lengthy list of interventions and steps taken when, uh, kids do what kids will do. Nowhere in that list was, uh, roll the block. Something that he referred to as McDonald's rule, where it's okay to call the police, but if the contact would have gotten in trouble. I, I'd say I was disappointed in that philosophy. I, I'm interested to know. When law enforcement is brought into some of the problems we have.
It's, it's when, it's a, we have a great SRO. I have to say, Matt Vanderboom has just been, uh, a wonderful addition to our team. He works very closely with us. He responds very well to verbal and non-verbal cues, and especially if, uh. We tell Matt, we need you in the area, but I don't need you to engage. He responds and, and listens to us first. Uh, we actually had a, a, a few incidents this year where we knew that Matt. Was able to calm down a student without having to go hands-on and convince the student, um. You know, and consult with the parents that perhaps leaving Arrowhead at this time was probably the best choice. And if we had a worked-up student that would just, okay. And, and, and Matt would give them a ride home to, to, to be with the parents rather than making an extremely bad choice here. Um, it's, and I, tell me if I'm out of sorts here, but. The way I look at it is only if we are in, in, in danger of a student causing harm to themselves or to other students. Um, and we feel at that threshold, and then cross, we go through, uh, non-violent training as a student services staff. In, um, restraints and holds that are safe for the individual that we employ if we feel like they're in danger of hurting themselves or others. Uh, we'd like to do that before, uh, we call law enforcement, but there is times when we have had to have, uh, law enforcement go hands-on. There was an incident a few years ago when, um, a student was going after Ms. Paradowski, who was hobbling. The injuries on Ms. Paradowski is something that we need to put on a more topic. She got the arms leg right out, but she was hobbling. Student went after her, he went into, uh, non-violent hold on the student. Uh, with two of our aides. A student was, you know, neutralized immediately, kind of gave, gave way. Um, and then the, the police got involved afterwards because it was going to be a, a behavior that had been demonstrated. But I don't know if that answered your question. That's how I conceptualize it in my mind for when we're going to involve a, a police officer. Uh, we, we have them involved for supportive measures as well. So sometimes things happen in the community. And, um, the police officer is here, he lets us know what went on, what went down. And at times, especially with Matt, again, I can't tell you how good he is. Um, he's a friendly face to the students as well too, because they know that he's somebody who's protected them. Um, in, in, in different circumstances.
One, and Tim, you had started with a question about signing students and writing on tickets too, and then. And Dev can attest to it, Matt's very flexible and he works with us. So as we know, THC, marijuana, illegal champion schools. But even to that point, again, looking at the student, looking at the history, looking at their home life, looking at why are you doing this here at school? Why do you need this? He will work with us and instead of giving the fourteen, fifteen hundred dollar citation for paraphernalia and marijuana in schools. Do a four golden ticket, then we have them take a Saturday course. There's a two-hour component with mom and dad. Um, if they have hold on that, they're already, they have to attend the course, they have to participate and finish it. If they don't, the ticket will go through, but otherwise, there is no ticket, there is no record. Because again, your health and your education on what you're doing is more important than having you seen in front of a judge in time, supporting or valuing your homework job. So again, Matt isn't somebody who says, that's illegal, no, I have to write a ticket. He works with Dev and I and will come to a solution at best. And again, like I said earlier, for the students. And the given situation, their home life, their history. So he's not a hands-on immediately, he's not a write a ticket immediately.
It is collaborative too, which is.
No, that's very much on the side of our students. No parents can come get the students and they're not feeling well, so they have to be a, a non-yes. So I'll just take the student back the other end, stop the parent, no, hey, no, get a squad, show up at your driveway, just dropping off your sick car. If they have permission, we'll do that. So. So any number of, like, health teachers who lock their keys in their car. Pull up the school and help them get their keys. So, yeah, we, we, we do that for a lot of things. And he's just a smiley, calm, calming person.
He's around a lot of our interactions, but it's, he keeps his distance only to create the relationship with the kids. Because a lot of the kids that we see here oftentimes repeat the.
Because a lot of the kids that we see are oftentimes repeat offenders and, um, that helps to create that relationship. In fact, our students are very comfortable with that, which is a positive and a positive type of career.
On Friday mornings, I have a family thing I do with the all dead kids and sometimes those teams in the past have been in trouble with the law. So Matt has come in and played dictionary and it's on, it's like, yeah, he's come in this, yeah, he's like us, we don't want the kids to see us as disciplinarians and police officers. We're here to help you, you know, looking at me, it's just like your friends and your family. So he's come in and he's, you know, he's a donor. Or played kickball with us in the gym. So, yeah, he does get to their level, but still maintain the credibility, so. He'll turn him education, so the students.
I have to say, we're used to about that, sometimes I've been concerned that that just goes forward, but in others that uh, sort of discipline issues have been offered a lot of persons.
This was so informative, thank you for the time, because it's a case of late with us, but I loved the whole lot, just listening to you.
We're both going to hang out anytime. Thanks for listening, you appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. So always enjoy. All right, next time, next time, the discussion next on board was listening and learn session tactics. Deal with the survey that is going to put out for partial survey results.
Sure, the board has the data. So the question is, the Arrowhead School Board is considering bullying as new learn sessions with parents and community members. Please identify which topics are of interest to you, set, select a public topic. So there were six hundred and twenty-two people that answered a question. But if you counted up all the responses, it's more like twenty-six hundred. That's because each person could mark one item that they're interested in, or they could mark ten items they're interested in. Uh, and the graphs are there in terms of, there's a bar graph and then on the second page, um, there's percentages or numbers that were brought down of how many. So I don't know if you got a chance to look at it, the, kind of far and away, the most interest was in college and career planning. Next topic was mental health. Third topic, current instructional practices. Fourth topic, critical race theory. Fifth topic, curricular stress cultures. Um, and then we also supply, printed out the comments that went along, that's all of the comments that went along with the survey question.
What I understand about, um, when I looked at those, I thought the numbers don't add up. Look at the second, I think the second page. Okay, how did we have one hundred and nineteen responses, but that was sixty-seven percent? Um, and then the max one hundred and sixty-two is twenty-six percent. Well, we're near, nearly a hundred percent already. So I thought something doesn't quite jive. I did, I, I, I tabulated this. I just listed the ranks as well, so I, I went and read this in descending order as far as responses and percent, that represents the total responses. Survey Monkey, I don't know if Survey Monkey did, I'm not quite sure. I, I realize there are multiple possibility of answers long cast up, but I don't know. I don't know how Survey might calculate that these.
They, they divided it by the number of people that responded.
So that's where you get, uh, like, if you see electronically, where you see the special education services, fifty-seven responses. That's fifty-seven divided by the six hundred and twenty-two that participated. So five point seven percent of the parents have a desire to see, to listen to that topic. So for college education, college career grant, any sixty-seven percent of parents are interested in learning books.
So if the actual people, not all the responses, I see. Well, it's nice to have.
Do we have, do we offer a college and career planning, um, like workshop or session?
Yeah.
Yeah, sweet.
The counselors do, uh, meetings, uh, in the morning for parents and then they also have them webcast now.
And they, when they do.
State's topics.
Six forty-five AM, six forty-five PM, to try and allocate to our schedules.
Yep, and then there's freshman and junior conferences as well too, where they go over a lot of that.
I, every time we do an academic career exploration homeroom, um, I'll include in that following month's newsletter, here's what we did in the homeroom and all of the lessons that we do for academic career planning or post-gradual work site.
I mean, I think the second topic would be mental health. I think that would be good for for parents. Listening session, uh, services.
You know, this started with a discussion or a request to where to open for. I don't want, although necessarily. Attempting to build the silence for the topic that we go to if nobody has any questions. So I guess I'm not necessarily opposed to it as long as the idea that this was initially asked, requested as an open your question and answer session for whoever shows up, whatever they have. Uh, kind of conversation. I, sounds like we're serving the one, number one, most interesting topic, unsurprisingly, college, reparation. Instead of selecting a topic, I would include one list of topics that they can choose from, none.
The only problem, I think, I think that's a good idea, I think that's kind of what occurred. If you manage to go in the other route and actually having a topic discussion is then you can have support staff or whatever to address those particular items. You know, more intelligent with just having questions come up, but, yeah, we can provide a chat or a little angle up because we don't have a lot of people. I can see both sides of it.
We have like a discussion, like, hey, we have to ask the first person, you know, twenty minutes about mental health, we have questions. And then open, you know, it's an hour-long session. Then the second, hey, do you have any questions in general of school or what's going on? Full answer to the best.
I kind of think it's going to be sort of an organic thing, you know, I, I like the idea of keeping it open. Uh, I think that that's kind of directs us in whatever path we're going to end up going and maybe, you know, maybe that maybe an open session would be something that we find, okay, a lot of people are gravitating to this, you know, maybe we'll have a, I don't know, I just feel like having an open opportunity for the public and our board to have dialogue is really going to be helpful to facilitate whatever the next, the next step is within, you know, our, however awful it may be.
I like that idea as well. I, I think there's a lot of merit to just leaving it as an open session. Where we go from there, maybe it's determined by the very first listener session. And if we have the support staff there, then, you know, maybe we, we work off the premise that if there are any unanswered questions arising out of that event where the staff are not there, that would be, I'm sure that those questions are addressed in some fashion. But I don't know that you necessarily have to be calling the chief or I think people would be, um, really agree with me showing up and just having another forum.
Yeah, but then if we have topics, like even if we bundle some of these topics, like how people waiting to school safety, you know, if, okay, that's, that's going to be a lot of people interested in that, but, you know, maybe there's going to be other ones that aren't going to be very many people that are going to be interested in coming to that, you know, just, it's just, I think as long as we have an open dialogue, I think that's what we've we've heard, I mean, I think that's what we heard from administration, that's really helpful to the students. I think that's going to be also helpful for us in, uh, in communicating, you know, where we're going with the school and, and, you know, where the public, you know, the, the challenges that they have for us. I think, I think just an open dialogue is really going to be, uh, a positive, positive first step.
I agree with that answer, it would be the way to start out, see where it goes from there. Does it sound better? I guess the next question is, next question is, when?
Would be, who would be there representing Arrowhead instead of the administrative staff or? Or it wouldn't be like all night, the board members.
I think it certainly needs a board because I think that's the whole purpose of this, to, I think, plenty of more policy to speak to the board and that open dialogue with the board. And when I start to think about it after that meeting, you know, people said that we don't have the opportunity to speak to the board and they truly are correct. I mean, you have three minutes of board meeting, but there's no dialogue, there's no conversation going on. It's a one-way, one-way discussion. Board not responding and no feedback. I think that's really the, the whole impetus for this thing is to have some open dialogue. Not a meeting per se, just a, you know, not formal board meeting, just a group of people getting together, so, which has to be board members. But, you know, with no agenda, no, uh, no specific agenda, no action items, that kind of stuff, which is open dialogue. Up to the, to discuss what might be on the mind of the public, things that might come up that we could then, um, perhaps add to agendas later and, and take action with that, whether it's a policy issue, whether it's discipline issues, whether it's academic issues, curriculum issue, wherever the case may be, and we spend enough, enough that opportunity for that, that, uh, discussion and discourse.
That time to be focused. Seems like we committed to doing something, so, if we have one schedule, we'll see what the increase is.
Well, what, January? I think, certainly I don't think we can do anything in the summer. Because you want to start with. I think I'm in general ready for, I'm a doctor for January already, but, uh, I think we need, we need to take some action. I think we need to have the public see that we are responding, we're, we're actually responding and, and I heard what they had said. I would like to. Or, 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 I'm just taking. Open up a couple hours session, we will be here. And with the listening sessions, we have, the, uh, referential, we have, we will be here for two hours and the the people showed up in the last few minutes, we sat here. Didn't just, whatever, I mean, I might
be in favor of having an official start in time.
Well, yes, we then tie.
An end time would, would it be similar as long as the kind of station?
I believe to be here for three hours and twelve, whenever you want to.
Maybe it's a Wednesday evening, um, two weeks off of regular board meeting, seven to nine.
I can miss my guy off the one.
Attend this volleyball, sir.
Seven. Oh, seven thirty.
Oh, we started up at six o'clock. My suspicion is that our attendance.
That's okay.
Uh, that stage will be a problem because we have incoming freshman orientation and they have five hundred students and their parents all over in this room, in the cafeteria, in classrooms.
One group is going to have questions.
Yeah, go ahead and do it that night.
Administration, we're in the cafeteria, so you take over the cafeteria, we'll go to the Phoenix. So just to clarify, in terms of posting, I'll post the meeting, am I posting one? I heard at one point, let's try one, and then another part to the point, I heard Wednesdays, plural. So it's just something you're scheduling out.
When I said Wednesdays, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't be generic to, why?
Well, no, it wasn't when you, it was, I don't, you know, someone said the, the Wednesdays opposite or meetings is, is it like for sure every month? So I.
Yeah, let's start with one and see what their reaction is.
I guess that's how it's monkey, but.
Monday the thirty-first, or it could be, or just Monday in general. Monday the first, if that's a lunar new year.
That does take away an option for it.
Well, I think that, I, I think the timeliness of the consult is more important. More important than we have the main consult. What is our, what is our?
I might be able to know that. I have this meeting. So I work on that first and then determine. Just summarize all these dates.
You know, Adam, you guys did such a great job on the bullying and harassment proactive measures and responses. I wonder if you could include that maybe in one of your, um, your monthly newsletters for people who are interested in that subject. Because you just did a half hour, I don't know, forty-five minute. It covered everything. I mean, this would. I mean, this would cover all of the questions. Could you maybe do a link to that video?
To the video?
This video will be linked.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, because it was fabulous. And for all the 178 people who were concerned about it, they could capture that.
We can, we'll, we'll see what we can figure out. Yeah. Yeah, I, I hesitate to just put the PowerPoint. Obviously, there's a lot of context that's lost without the descriptions. But if we can find a way to, to clip out the video or just share the times that it's available or something along that line.
And then they wouldn't have to wait for a meeting or maybe not be able to get to the meeting. They could find out about that information right away.
Or maybe we have Bob's assistance and he could post it first. No problem.
Uh, this sort of raises the question, I might, but I wish. We're going to do it. We have a calendar somewhere. Well, it's a letter as well.
School website.
And all the club, club groups, the leaders of the club groups, I guess, can promote it. We're looking for a possible 31st or seventh, or either those two sessions. Either. So there or list the same. But the cell tier, you need five yellow. Anything else?
Yeah, but it certainly does raise the question. Market visit, you will come to people to look up this and good sound. Things that this is promoted for. To make sure that we have the time. January, January, February to make sure that it's added the time. If, you know, it's there. What about even going to the theater schools, the principals and just saying, can you promote this for your families? Eighth graders or whatever.
And in, those are several locations. What content are we, is it?
Meeting discussion.
Students too stupid. There's no such thing as a stupid question.
Right? Future agenda items.
Do we have to do an action though? Do we have to follow? Because it says discussion and action on board listening in the session.
All right. We probably have that, I have no support. Yep. To actually order the scheduling meeting with.
Both consultants and.
That's, that's our, our four years' term. Yeah, first available date, January 31st, February 7th.
I'll make the motion.
All right, we're starting to schedule a public forum discussion of board for earliest possible date. January 31st or February 7th. Discussion. Favorite side.
Hi.
Host, carry it. Thank you. Uh, future agenda. I have. And we keep hearing about the problems, especially from Jeff about lack of revenue. Your finance committee is all your circles of finance committee. It's actually our finance and legislative committee is the actual name of it. Actually, the time here is finance and legislation. In the past, I think briefly mentioned the time that we should do something as far as, let's say lobbying, lobbying, but at least talking to our legislators. About school issues, that kind of stuff. There's, there's always the legislative day, the Capitol that, that merge, we, whenever. I think our biggest problem is the revenue limit. And I think, now we, we have a school that is one of the top schools in the state consistently. Ranked nationally in top schools in the nation, top tier, maybe I should say. And I think that should carry some weight and kind of give us some clout. And I think, I guess I'd like to see us get involved and start actually doing something from a legislative standpoint, talking to our legislators, inviting them in, going to Capitol, whatever, and start making it, do what we can do. See if we can get some traction on. Much of the uphill battle that might be as far as revenue changes, changes the revenue. Limit. It's calculated. I know that's, that's a heavy lift, but unless somebody tackle, but not going anywhere. I guess I'd like to see us talk about that, like, about, uh, see what, uh, just ideas. Or other legislative ideas too. I mean, it's not willing to do that. Not, not slave issues that could affect the school.
I know Jeff has specifically talked to some of the legislators and had some history with that. So, yeah, I think we could have that as a discussion.
I think it was here once. I remember him a little while, just once, but he was pretty big at that time. So that was a few years ago. He was just maybe assembly. So maybe you should come back.
Cindy Jappola has been here times, not with the board, but with the school. And we sit down to talk for an hour and then I actually heard her write a show. Several letters on behalf of the board on different topics or on behalf of the district and the board. To keep that going. I certainly, I have saved samples from other districts to just school finance letters, helping to educate. You know, legislators, they make laws on everything. They can't possibly be an expert on everything. That's not fair to expect. So to, to have letters that teach and inform and advocate, I think it's really important.
So just while we have a legislative day. Yeah, I know like the road builders, they have a caller that gives up to shake hands with their legislators. That happened to two plus people.
Sure.
I mean, I, I actually wrote a book over here. This letter, where, just lots.
They do, they have the day of the Capitol. Yeah, for some reason, I think that's a mark. Invite school board members, administrators to come up to ask, decide the legislative.
2019 was held on March 13th. Over 200 board members and administrators made their way to. So. About adding it to an agenda, do you mean a board agenda or through finance and legislation committee for discussion?
I don't know, tell me do the legislative, the finance committee, since that's actually, yeah, sure.
Anything else? Not that, if not, we're going to work through the dirt.
Come on.
Thanks, everybody.
Go, go celebrate tomorrow is the plan.
Hey, Doug, I just wanted to, you know, officially.
And it's going to something, like, I mean, and it didn't bounce back. So it went to something.
Somebody's probably going to start that number and get like a text, right?
I'm going to start. Pictures and articles and me.
Get some dinner, yeah?
Do you want to see about?
And then I thought, why doesn't Adam ever text me?
So I've been, you know.
No, if we do.
I mean, when you see the, I saw the rise of.